I'd like to call the Franklin Public School Board meeting for Wednesday, May 26th, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes, Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Wackowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Dr. Kahn.
Here.
Dr. Beer.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, anti-tobacco poster contest winners. Dr. Miller and Ms. Henry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Ellen Henry from the Franklin Health Department, and she, tonight, is going to share with you the winners of our anti-tobacco poster contest. So I'm going to turn it over to her. I believe there's a number of the students who are present today. So I'll turn it over to you and can explain what it's all about.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'm happy to be here tonight on such a, for such a wonderful occasion to help celebrate some of our 7th graders that won our 25th Annual Tobacco Prevention Poster Contest. To give a little bit of context, 25 years ago, the number-one song on the radio was "The Macarena," and Independence Day starring Will Smith was the number-one movie. Looking out at all the sea of students here, half of you weren't even alive yet, or half the people in the room weren't even alive yet. So it is wonderful that we've been able to continue this tradition in the city of Franklin for 25 years, especially given the challenges we faced this school year, with some students virtual and some students in person. Tonight, I want to honor our 20 winners that we had, let's see, over 260 entries into our tobacco poster contest this year. So about over 200 7th graders submitted a poster, a youth-appealing poster that will be designed and used as a social media advertisement, marketing youth in Franklin, so about what they believe is important about tobacco and vaping prevention, and what they believe their peers should know. Tonight, I would like to call up our, any winners in attendance. We can kind of read your name off, and we will show your tobacco poster. Funding for this contest is, it's funded by licensing fees from our tobacco retailers in the city of Franklin. So any winners that are in attendance tonight, come on up, and we will read your name off and show the board your wonderful posters. Individuals that are not in attendance tonight, their posters are lined up along the back stairs if anyone would like to take a look at their poster.
So why don't you line up here first, and you can show the audience your posters. You can tell us your name, which would allow us to then hand you your certificate. So guys, I'm just going to make a long line this way. You just want to, you're kind of far. Maybe take a step closer to the audience so they could actually see your, let's move the line over here, guys. They can actually see your They all did such a wonderful job. I had the honor of judging, and it was very, very hard. So if we start with this young man, if you would share your name, and then maybe just something about your poster real quick?
Oh, I...
Yeah, that helps.
My name is Derek Ordell, and my poster says, "Smiles will appear once the smoke disappears."
Thank you. If you want to walk around and show our board members, they would love that.
My name's Ethan Ditser, and mine is, "Don't Get Wrapped Up in Smoking."
Thank you.
My name is Ella Oplinger, and mine says, "Tobacco harms what's on the inside."
I'm Gabby Krakow, and mine says, "Don't Stand Out for the Wrong Reason."
"Don't Stand Out for the Wrong Reasons."
My name's Olivia Lethleen, and mine says, "Fight the Urge."
My name's Izzy Martin, and mine says, "It's Not Cool to Get Lit."
My name is Katie Kobleski, and mine says, "Don't Let Cigarettes Catch You."
My name is Gabby Joy, and mine says, "Don't Let Your Life Go Up in Smoke."
My name is Abby Boyer, and mine talks about all the bad stuff that's in cigarettes.
My name's Samantha Ruffing, and mine says, "Don't Vaporize Your Lifeway."
My name is Raina Batum, and mine talks about, "Save Your Lungs, No Drugs."
Wonderful. Let's give them a round of applause.
So all winners here tonight, along with a copy of their poster, will also receive
a certificate of congratulations and a $100 gift card. So congratulations again, everyone.
So, boys and girls, if you would meet Ms. Henry in the back of the room, she'd be glad to give you your certificates. Thank you very much.
Community comment, and additional community comment. Participants under this agenda item must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. Participants under the additional community comment have registered to speak to the board at greater length. If community comment is related to another item on the agenda, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item. All reports, comments, and/or questions are welcome. However, personal criticism and/or derogatory remarks directed at individual school board members or employees of the district are out of order will not be tolerated and will end the individual's community comment. Does anybody wish to have a community comment?
Do you need my name, or is it okay?
Please.
My name is Debbie Kelly. Thank you. I want to thank the Franklin Public School Administration and Board for your commitment to the safety of teachers, students, and the larger Franklin community since the start of the COVID-19 crisis. You have made difficult decisions throughout this situation and have done so with great consideration for the well-being of vulnerable members of our community and a strong commitment to educating our children. I believe there is common ground that can be achieved with all of us looking forward to moving toward more normalcy in the coming year. The clearest path to this goal is by increasing rates of vaccination throughout the city of Franklin, as this is the best way to protect everyone in our community. I hope that those who truly wish to minimize the need for mask-wearing in the fall will join these efforts to promote vaccination now that hundreds of millions of adults and teens have received this protection with minimal to no adverse responses. This unprecedented vaccination effort has shown the desired results: significant reduction in the spread of COVID-19, and, most importantly, sharply lower death rates. I wish to share some insights from a colleague of mine in a discussion on a college campus about the development of COVID-19 policies for the coming fall. As a person, quote, these are not my words, quote, "As a person old enough to remember and live through the polio epidemic, I remember iron lungs and paralysis that left people impaired for life, the reduction of breathing capacity for life, and the fear of playing with other children and the isolation that followed. When the polio vaccine came out, there was no option. If you attended a school, either public or private, you were required to be vaccinated. The scope of that campaign wiped out polio in my lifetime," end of quote. I am certainly not suggesting that the district require vaccines, but I would hope that we, as a community, could take the lessons from history. By coming together for the common good to eradicate a deadly disease, we can end this pandemic once and for all, protect the lives of the most vulnerable members of our community, and return to the normalcy of life that we all hope to achieve. Thank you."
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Fisher. I reside at 4930 West Woodland Drive. Could I just have a brief show of hands, not only from our esteemed board members, but as well as members of the audience? Show of hands. In the last year, who has gone outside without wearing sunblock? I admit it. Has anyone ridden a bike or motorcycle without a helmet? Kids, this applies to you, too. Participated in sports? Eaten sushi, a steak cooked only to medium temperature, or Caesar salad? If you've eaten at a restaurant and looked at the menu, the consumer warning clearly states, "Consuming raw or undercooked meats, poultry, seafood, shellfish, or eggs may increase your risk of foodborne illness." If you're over 16 in this room, how about driven in a car? Do you know what it means to assume the risk of inactivity? Many activities involve an element of risk. Some are inherent to the activity undertaken, such as skydiving. However, people undertake tasks every day that are less threatening than skydiving. These tasks also require assumption of some inherent risk, despite all exercise due care. Few activities we undertake involve greater risk than simply driving an automobile. We risk mechanical failure, road defects, the negligence of other drivers, and our own inattention. That bit of information and definition comes from Monse's and Mayor Trial Attorney website. When our family traveled to Disney World this past March, signs were displayed everywhere with the following reminder, and I quote, "We have taken enhanced health and safety measures for you, for other guests, and cast members. You must follow all posted instructions while visiting Walt Disney World. An inherent risk of exposure to COVID-19 exists in any public place where people are present. COVID-19 is an extremely contagious disease that can lead to severe illness and death. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, senior citizens and guests with underlying medical conditions are especially vulnerable. By visiting Walt Disney World, you voluntarily assume all risks related to exposure of COVID-19," end of quote. As parents, we literally assume multiple risks for our children every day when we send them to school, starting with the ride there. Then, for eight hours, they could encounter any of the following: a gym class or recess injury, tripping and falling on the stairs, choking at lunch, tech ed equipment injury, the list goes on. We don't need to send them to school in bubble wrap. We just need to know that there is, by nature of attending school, a chance that your child might get hurt. And quite frankly, I believe that those risks are far greater than any of them catching or spreading COVID by not wearing a mask." Finally, I close with a tweet that was shared on Facebook recently. This is from Sarah. "I don't know if the guy in the car next to me has a driver's license. I don't know if the lady making my burger just licked it. Guys, we're going to have to just live and hope for the best. There is no way to eliminate risk without living in some dystopian nightmare." Thank you.
Anybody else have a community comment?
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. Kevin Fisher, 4930 West Woodland Drive, CODS Country, USA. I have to confess that when the district made its latest declaration last Friday, I was underwhelmed that kids could drop their masks while outside. I couldn't help but feel like Oliver Twist in that Charles Dickens classic, when he walked up to the master holding out an empty bowl of gruel and sheepishly said, "Please, sir, I want some more." What you decided last Friday is nowhere near what parents and kids have asked for over and over and over again, only to have their requests fall on deaf ears. It is mind-boggling that in dozens of schools and districts throughout Wisconsin, leaders have seen the light. They've made the right call. What do they know that Franklin doesn't? Or what do they know that Franklin refuses to acknowledge or even remotely consider? It's a fact that we've had over a year to observe the effects of COVID-19. We know it does not affect school-age children in the same way it affects the elderly and the vulnerable. This isn't March of 2020. We know so much more now than we did back then. Children under the age of 19 have an exceedingly small chance of dying due to COVID-19. We're going to have lost an entire generation of young individuals if we don't change course. We are robbing our children of meaningful social interaction when we require them to have masks covering their faces all day long. This is severely hindering their ability to develop and understand critical, nonverbal communication with their peers. I stumbled across this recently from columnist and blogger Matt Walsh, who wrote, "Wearing a mask when it is not medically necessary is grotesque and unhuman, an attack on society itself. It feeds paranoia and fear. You are treating air like it is toxic and other humans like they are nothing but vessels of disease. It is disgraceful, arrogant, and offensive." And this, just within the past week or so, from investigative journalist Jordan Chactel. "Masks give meaning to people with meaningless lives. People were led to think they were doing something virtuous by wearing a mask all day. Many don't want the scam to end because it makes people reexamine the sunk costs and entertain the possibility that it was all for nothing." So, as far as the full mental health toll of our reaction to COVID-19, all signs point to it already being catastrophic. We need to stop the damage now. Unmask our kids, and let's do it soon.
I might have to adjust this. I'm vertically challenged. Good evening, board members. During this past year, we have learned a lot regarding the pandemic and used drastic measures to combat the virus: quarantine, lockdowns, masking. But the most damaging to our children was the masking, especially the younger students in grades one through four and those with special needs. I recently attended a three-hour seminar with Jen Haas, a speech-language pathologist from Marquette University, who stated that, "When children wear masks, it lessens positive emotions and amplifies negative emotions." She did a study. Eighty percent of the parents were deeply concerned about the effect of wearing masks. Not 36, not 52, 80% of the parents. There's a wonderful study by the American Institute of Economic Research by Dr. Roger Koops, which states, "Masks have no significant impact in stopping the spread of COVID-19." And they lay heavy blame on our government leaders, but argued that the so-called "medical experts" have been largely unscientific, illogical, and irrational in their guidelines and statements. They talk about following the science, but they seem to be blinded by it. So let's talk science tonight. Early on in 2020, we knew that the key risk group were the elderly persons with medical conditions. There was an extremely low transmission rate and very low likelihood of children spreading COVID. In the leading journal Nature estimated the COVID-19 survival rate to be approximately 99.995% in children and teens. Secondary transmission evidence is nonexistent. In the Nature Communications Magazine of November 2020, they studied 10 million eligible persons. It was demonstrated that asymptomatic spread does not appear to happen at all. Another recent publication asserts that face masks become non-consequential and do not work after 20 minutes due to saturation. Researchers from the University of Oxford examined the data regarding the effectiveness of the use of masks. Findings: Masks alone have no significant impact in interrupting the spread of influenza in the general public nor healthcare workers. They also speculate that there is likely an elevated rate of harm infection when using cloth-faced masks. And most of the children here do use that type of mask. Now, let's talk about the negative effects of the masks: difficulty breathing, CO2 intoxication, anxiety and sleep problems, facial skin infections, nose, throat, and sinus infections, change in breathing patterns, headaches. This hits home for me because my granddaughter, who's never had difficulty breathing, is now seeing a specialist. Now, why would that be? The predominant conclusion is that face masks have a very important role in places such as hospitals, but there exists very little evidence of widespread benefit for members of the public, adults, and children, and is truly an infectual way to manage pandemic-related spread of a viral disease. The reality is that widespread use of masks is not supported by science, and in fact, just the opposite. The mask hysteria is driving unnecessary fear in the population, and it must end. Those who deliver statements relentlessly on the use of masks are doing so without the luxury of any credible evidence to support Moving down the road, my biggest fear is that the CDC, who will pass it along to the Health Department, who will regurgitate it to the board members, will require all school students to have the vaccine before entering school, or if they do not, they will have a mask mandate that would be reinstated. This would be devastating and will have a lasting effect on our children, especially the younger children. And a word about the vaccine or injection. Naturally, acquired immunity is superior to anything this injection could deliver. So students who have been through the infection and COVID-19 should be exempt from vaccination. It should always be a choice, not a mandate, and the ultimate decision should always rest with the parents. They are the ones responsible for their child's well-being and health. And, you know, we talk about it, and I guess people were talking about polio earlier before. I'm 71. I lived through polio. I lived through the rheumatic fever, scarlet fever, COVID, and I have not worn a mask since this started. And Grandma is still here, okay? Please let the children breathe. They need to breathe. God made us to have a face, and He gave us a wonderful immune system. Trust in that. Thank you.
What was the last speaker's name? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Max.
Max?
M-A-X.
M-A-X, what's your last name?
L-E-A-R-N-E-D.
L-E-A-R-N-E-D?
Correct.
Perfect. Do you guys have any preference, mask or no mask? I really don't care. Beautiful. Firstly, I want to thank you guys for following the science. I'm really glad we've got a lot of healthcare experts in our community that are willing to provide comment, and I appreciate you guys continuing to follow whatever the science says, because that's how this should be done. We should allow the doctors that studied medicine to make our medical decisions. I'm not here talking about the popular subject. I'm here talking again about something that I was here to talk about six to eight months ago, and that is the role of race within our schools. Yesterday marked one year since the murder of George Floyd. For many Americans, this awoke us to the presence of systemic racism within our communities, including the impact that majority-white educational institutions such as Franklin Public Schools can have within this crisis. I stood here alongside a different group of 100 or so of my community members to discuss the impact that racism has on Franklin Public Schools just six months ago. Now, it is again in the political mainstream to discuss the role race should have in schools, specifically the role of critical race theory, and I am here to speak to the fact that teaching critical race theory within our schools is crucial because it is the truth. I remember vividly, not in this middle school, but the building just right over there, a crucial part of my education: my social studies classes. My teachers, Ms. Egan and Mr. Fish, repeated over and over again, "Ask the question, why? Why did this happen? Why did this person write this article? Why did this historical figure make this decision?" This is the foundation of having a logical train of thought and also the foundation of critical race theory. Questioning why one thing connects to the other, including the social construction of race, is the only way for our students to be able to understand the history that came before them and the current world as we stand today. There is much more than COVID that you as a board are responsible for, and I appreciate your dedication to listening to all of your members of the community, but it is also crucial that we be considering how to continue to better the education of our students, because at the end of the day, what comes out of the teachers' mouths is likely the most important thing they're going to get. Thank you. Could you state your name, please? Yes, Tyler Kelly, and I'm on the speaker's list, but my address is 7394 Heather Ridge Court in Franklin. Thank you.
Is there any more community comment? I think we have time for another person or two, and then we have several people who have requested additional community comment.
Tom Wamser. I'd like to say that that last student who was up here is a perfect example It's time for you to take off the masks and start working on things that will block critical race training to indoctrinate more children to the socialist-communist views like this person has. Certainly, America is not perfect. We have some scars, but nobody's dealt with them in the whole world as well as we've dealt with them. Capitalism and the freedom and liberties that we have in our country, and the wars that we fought, and the blood and treasure that we've given up, have done more to help the world than any other country. So if we want to give all those kinds of ideals up, then the indoctrination of our students, which this young man is a perfect example of, is what we're going to get. I'm not going to be around that much longer. I'm 70, but I'd kind of like to think we left the world in as good or better place as our parents and grandparents left it to You guys need to take off your You guys need to take off your masks and start dealing with some serious subjects around here. I hope you start soon. When is this mask thing going to be on the agenda?[612.29][612.32](APPLAUSE). I don’t know all your rules and regulations, but it sure appears to me that each one of you like to hide behind your mask. You don’t have to interact because those are the rules. It’s time for us, I guess, to start questioning the rules, get the rules changed. And we have to have a school board that is responsible to the constituents, not the superintendent, not the principal, not the vice-principal. Who’s in charge around here? You guys are in charge. But you’re not in charge. You’re just one gigantic tail getting wagged, one gigantic dog getting wagged by the tail. Take some responsibility. Do what you’re supposed to do. I can’t believe we keep saying this.
Hello, my name is Amber Zones. I have two children in the school district. Do you need my spelling of my name? No, okay. I’m here to support keeping a mask mandate in schools for as long as the medical experts recommend. I know that children are relatively safe from the most severe symptoms of COVID, but studies have shown that more than 10% experience long-lasting symptoms, such as loss of taste and smell, shortness of breath, and fatigue. And we do not yet know the long-term effects of COVID-19 since it is new in humans. In the face of uncertainty, we should proceed with caution. I have heard many people say, “If someone is afraid of COVID, then that person should wear a mask and let others do as they want.” But the masks that are available to the public are minimumly effective at protecting the wearer. The masks prevent the wearer from breathing and talking COVID particles into the air. Masks protect everyone else but the person wearing them. Additionally, COVID can enter your body through your mouth, nose, and your eyes. A mask provides no protection to the wearer’s eyes. The only way to protect your eyes is to have others wear masks. Some like to compare the risk of COVID to the risk of riding in a car, but we are required to wear seat belts in cars. Requiring masks in school is no different than requiring seat belts in cars. Lastly, I worry that making masks optional will cause strife among our students. Students who wear masks will be called sheep by those who don’t. And students who don’t wear masks will be seen as selfish and reckless by those who do. If masks are required for all, then hopefully we can stop some of the vitriol that has spread through our country from entering our schools. And hopefully, peer pressure will not influence our children’s decisions whether or not to protect those around them. Thank you for your time.[840.04][840.07](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Amna Ojegovic, and I am here again speaking against mandatory mask-wearing for our children. Last time I spoke in front of you, I said that I stand with you, assuming you had the best interest of our children on your mind. Turns out, you do not. Turns out, you have your own personal agenda, and it does not matter to you how some parents feel. And I would say I understand that, but how come you did not even show any compassion, understanding, support to a struggling student of a Franklin Public School district? You have failed, my daughter. Her name is Lana Ojegovic. She is eight years old and in second grade at Countrydale. She’s a student who has followed directions since she stepped her foot in that school. Unfortunately, that caused her health problems. Thankfully, we have reached out to an actual medical team of Children’s Hospital of Wisconsin, who confirmed that one size does not fit all and that she should not wear a mask. She’s not wearing a mask. In no way should any healthcare professional mandate our children to do something without examining them, because some children are not comfortable with masks. So why are you pushing them? Forcing them, I’m sorry, forcing something on my children that they do not feel comfortable with, something that is causing them a physical pain, is called abuse. Again, one size does not fit all. I want to point all parents whose children have headaches, increased irritability, difficulty concentrating, reluctance to go to school, impaired learning, drowsiness, fatigue, shortness of breath, to remove the cause of this. This was recommended to me by a doctor from Children’s Hospital of Wisconsin. So I followed your mandates, and look at me now, still trying to prove my point, which is I want you to leave medical conditions, decisions, and everything health-related to parents, meaning decisions that are affecting these children. I do not mean that office should not administer an epipen in case of an emergency or give a Band-Aid to a child who would need a Band-Aid. As a few blindly following CDC, I respect that and good for you. The experts from the CDC have told us that we need to obey all the measures due to asymptomatic spread. Now however, they are telling everyone who has received a vaccine that reduces the symptoms but does not prevent transmission to move on. What kind of nonsense is this? Does this same nonsense apply to your rule, masks off outside but wear them inside? What in the world is that right now? Is this selective protection of some sort? Because I am not understanding this. My husband and I will continue making decisions about our children. We do not want your input unless it’s education-related.
Good evening. Michelle Winkie, 3676 West Central Avenue. So here I am once again. I’ve requested the masking be placed on the agenda back on April 29th and May 10th so that there can be a two-way conversation going on with this district and parents. I want to know why it is still not on the agenda, and I’m not the only person who has requested it to be put on. Why is everything regarding the masking being done behind closed doors at Franklin? There are more and more parents who want transparency and a discussion on why our children are still masked, even more so now with more and more districts going optionals already this summer and fall. So once again, I’m requesting that you make masks optional immediately. And then, just another note, I’d also like to touch base on the Saber Roar that was produced for the May 19th. As my understanding, it’s produced by the students with teachers’ inputs overview. I don’t really know. But there, at the nine-minute mark, was a segment regarding vaccine history and myths that are addressed by students and a science teacher. Our children are told by other children, quote, “Remember Sabers, it’s your choice whether or not to get the vaccine, but this is our first step to living normal again.” What was that about? Then another student basically says the same thing, quote, “This is our first step to return to normalcy, Sabers. Remember, the choice is yours.” There are so many things wrong with children telling children that in order to get back to normal, they should take a vaccine. A vaccine that’s not FDA-approved, a vaccine that is still in trials, a vaccine that has no long-term studies, and a vaccine unapproved except for emergency uses. The teacher then...[1152.16][1152.19](APPLAUSE). The teacher then goes on to debunk three myths regarding changing your DNA, the safety in microchips. She tells our children that the vaccine is, quote, “CDC authorized,” unquote, “safe to get,” unquote. Nowhere in this clip does she talk about it being an experiment or still in trial phases, or that this is something children should talk to their parents about, and that the disease has a 99.997% survival rate for those under 20. This is all on the CDC website. You can find this yourself. There was no list or anything of side effects or allergic reactions that could happen, which could include difficulty breathing, swelling in your face and throat, a fast heartbeat, a bad rash all over your body, dizziness and weaknesses, and other possible side effects which are quoted “serious and unexpected,” unquote. So that there could be anything, who knows, paralysis, blood clots, heart attacks, and death, and whatever else is unexpected in this vaccine, since this is, quote, “still being studied in clinical trials.” Why are the teachers, the students, and this district trying to push this propaganda to our children? They are not the parents or family pediatrician. This does not belong in our schools. One’s vaccine status should be determined privately and at the family level for what is best for them, and not trying to pressure our children to take a vaccine to get back to normal. We can easily do that right now by unmasking these kids. Lastly, we also have mask managers at the elementary school level. It was during junior achievement at Southwood Glen. A fifth grader was, quote, “paid $5 to be the mask manager,” and I talked to the principal because I thought this was a rumor on Facebook, and I found out it was not a rumor on Facebook. This was true, and the principal told me that the teacher didn’t think there’s anything wrong with this, that the kids made these jobs up and they could pick their jobs. So now we have a student who’s in charge of being the mask manager. I don’t know how long that lasted. I don’t know if it’s still going on, but it blew my mind, and I would hope it blows everybody’s mind that we are already pitting kids against each other in this district. Our district needs to educate these...[1287.16][1287.19](APPLAUSE). Our district needs to educate our children in math, reading, writing, science, not be their parents, not be their family pediatrician. I ask that a retraction be done on the Saber Roar immediately regarding the irresponsibility, the one-sidedness, and the overstepping of that teacher who’s in charge of it and the students who produced it, because this does not belong in our district.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deena Swanson, and I live at 8146 South 43rd Street. Fourteen months have passed since we first were locked down. We have all had a very steep learning curve. However, even though that seems like a short period of time, these past two school years have been very long for all of us, no matter if you believe in mask-wearing or not mask-wearing. I am extremely tired of the fighting I see on social media brought on by our fellow neighbors. Our country was built on civil discourse. It is time we all begin to practice civility. I urge, I urge everyone to take a moment and talk to your neighbors face-to-face. Stand outside if everyone’s more comfortable. Just talk to your neighbors rather than firing off angry posts. You may not agree with their points of view, but I bet you would find you have more similarities than differences. As an example, I was sad and upset when my daughter did not have prom or in-person graduation last year. I am sad that my son doesn’t want to go to prom because of the mask restrictions. I know the parents here who are upset by mask-wearing. Our kids are friends. Our kids are engaged in sports and activities together. We are all good people. We want what’s best for our kids. We just have different opinions on how to get there. Those opinions should be respected and not ridiculed. Ridiculed. Sorry, I’m nervous. I want to thank the Franklin Public School Board for reviewing this very important topic on mask mandates. Also, for keeping us updated for the past 14 months with emails and metrics and your plan. I am sure there is much discussion and analysis of data that comes with your position. I want you to know that I appreciate the difficulty you must have with coming to a safe resolution. Let research and science lead the way. May you all carry on with civility in your decision-making for what is best for our district and not be pressured by anger. Thank you.
My name is Rosita Bartasevich, 8324 South 68th Street. Franklin resident for 26 years, three children in this school district, two have graduated, and I have one in high school. Franklin was a leader in southeastern Wisconsin last fall, allowing for full-time in-person instruction. Franklin, it’s time to lead again. Thank you for updating some of the prom rules as of a few hours ago. More on that later. While other schools in society, including our own local community, are lifting mask requirements, Franklin is continuing universal masking at schools. With society opening up everywhere outside of the school environment, masking in schools is now a futile endeavor. Parents should have the ultimate say if their child can go maskless, and we need to eliminate the exclusion of parents and extended family members from attending school events. We sign waivers and permission slips for everything all the time. We’d be happy to do so for this. This binder contains studies that the Franklin Health Department is using to support mask recommendations. What does it mean when people say masks work? Have you actually looked at the science behind this statement? Have you read the studies? I have read all of their studies. I’ve read a lot of additional ones on my own. Irrespective of what you believe, when you read, when you read these studies, the question, “Do masks really work?” boils down to this. It depends on what your definition of work is. The answer is that it varies greatly. Keep in mind that in clinical studies, you are showcasing the best possible results in a controlled environment, which does not always represent real-world settings and usage. Filtration efficiency and how well masks work under the best possible circumstances varied from anywhere between 20% to 80% effective. The studies themselves also point out limitations, including things like, “What is the fit of the mask to your face? Improper fit causes leakage and can reduce filtration efficiency by as much as 60%.” Mask composition, what fabric is being used? Is it one, is it two, or maybe even three layers? What’s the thread count? Is a filter being used, such as a piece of vacuum cleaner bag or a dried baby wipe? Most studies have looked at how the mask performed over a short period of time, like an hour, not a seven-hour school day. Are the masks, are the masks even being washed? How often? What does repeated washing and drying do to the mask fibers? Are disposable masks being disposed of daily or every four hours as recommended? When it comes to this science, this is an area where we need to agree to disagree. If you, if you believe that masks work, please feel free to continue wearing them. I invite each of you to reach out to me. I would be happy to share and discuss the research with you. Waukesha School District had a case positivity rate for close contacts that was 3%, which is nearly double what Franklin Schools published in mid-April, and Waukesha has eliminated quarantine altogether. On behalf of all high school students and their parents, of kids who would like to attend prom, I’d like to remind everyone that it has, that it is taking place the day after school ends and for the first time in two years. Currently, parents are not allowed to come in-person for the grand march. Additionally, if your prom date is an underclassman, we still don’t know if they will be allowed to attend. It depends on ticket sales and artificial capacity constraints. If the Milwaukee Bucks can have 9,000 fans in attendance, not socially distanced and without masks, I was there, I know, why can’t the kids have a normal prom? I learned just before coming here that the Bucks...[1768.24][1768.27](APPLAUSE). I also learned just before this meeting that the Bucks have increased their capacity to 15,000.[1779.04][1779.07](APPLAUSE). Franklin is again a negative outlier here. Greendale, Oak Creek, South Milwaukee, all allowed parents in-person at grand march. These schools did not dictate who your date was allowed to be, nor did they deprive their parents from being able to see and take cherished photos of their kids during grand march. parents from being able to see and take cherished photos of their kids during grand march. We've -- [applause] We've missed out on a lot of these opportunities. You can't take photos watching something on a screen. Please amend this part of the prom experience as your peers have also done. We now live in a community where already over sixty percent of adults in this community, eighteen and over, are fully vaccinated by their own volition. Did you know that? Over sixty percent. This outpaces the nation and the state. This is pretty remarkable and virtually unheard of for a novel compound in such a short amount of time. We've reached a point where we need to start living with this virus, not in fear of it. Lastly, as a reminder, this board is elected by the taxpayers of this community, and as such, when a community member reaches out to one of you and asks to speak with you, dismissing that request is unacceptable. Mr. President, I am ex -- [applause] Mr. President, I am extremely disappointed in your failure to honor my request to speak to you last week. It was the first time I ever reached out to you or any of the board members on this topic. Oh, and by the way, why are we okay with kids being on school buses without seat belts? Think about that.
Mr. Lopez, and then Ms. Vasilenko, it'll be your turn for additional community comment.
I'd like to say one thing, so I'm Ismael Lopez, 8601 South 76th Street. I'm here today, never would have come to these things, but I'm here today watching you guys not putting the mask on the agenda to unmask my child, unmask all of these people that want their kids unmasked. You didn't even put it on the agenda. How upsetting, how insulting. I see this gentleman on his phone while people are talking. You're listening to all your community members, you guys are all elected officials, and I want to let you guys all know, we will do everything in our power to vote you guys out. I, now at this point, will make sure I work hard to vote every single one of you out, because I see every single one of you with a mask on, which means that not one of you stands for taking the mask off my child, and that is insulting.
Hello, and I agree with him. I've been emailing a lot of you, and only one had the courtesy to answer me, and that was, I think Angela, my husband, said, "So, thank you, but the rest of me, rest of you have ignored me, and I won't go away, because I like that seventy-year-old grandma." Guess what? I'm a seventy-year-old grandma. And you know, for those who want to wear the mask, I don't want division, I don't. Wear the mask, even if you're fully vaccinated, they're even wearing them, they're fully vaccinated, and people are still wearing the mask. I thought the vaccination was the answer, you could unmask, but I'm a seventy-year-old grandma who did not listen to people telling me I could gather with my family. I gathered with my grandkids, because I'm seventy years old and I'm healthy, I walk every day, I watch my, what I eat, so I'm not compromised, like a lot of people. If you're compromised, yes, we protect the elderly, always, but I'm elderly, I'm a grandma, I didn't get sick, I work with children at my church. Don't hug them, I hug them. Nobody's going to stop me from being with my family, being with my kids at church, who don't wear masks, by the way. And for those who want to, like I said, that's great, but we're living our lives in fear. The mandate has come off, and I go shopping, and people still have their masks on, and it's like, why? And if they're fully vaccinated, which it's not a vaccine, it's a medical experiment, it is not a vaccine. It is, people are putting that fear in you to get it, which I'm not going to get, because I'm not putting an experiment in my body that is not approved by the FDA. And to sit there and want to give this to a child? I mean, this is really insane, who the, they don't even spread, and they have a dirty mask on you, as even you, I've seen you fidgeting with your mask, touching it with your germy hands. How safe is a mask when you really think about it? It's not. So, unmask my grandchildren. Guess what? Muskego, Norway did. My other grandkids have a choice, so I will fight for my grandkids in Franklin that I thought knew better. I'm a forty-four-year resident in Franklin, and I'm sorry to say, I'm ashamed of all of you, and start answering me when I email you. Is it a waste of time for me? I'm a taxpayer. We'll get you fired.
Ms. Vasilenko?
Thank you for giving me this extra time today. We'd like to start. Hello, my name is Matthew. Many schools and school districts all across Wisconsin have done what is right for their students and their parents. Congratulations to these schools for taking proper action. Abbotsford School District, Altoona School District, Arrowhead Union High School, Badger State Baptist, Baldwin Woodsville Area School District. Barron School District, Belleville School District, Bethany Lutheran School, Bondwell School District, Baller School District. Cadet Community School District, Cameron School District, Catholic Memorial High School, Cedar Grove Belgium Area School District, Colby School District. Coleman School District, Cornerstone Christian Academy, Crandall School District, Crivett School District, Cumberland School District. D.C. Everest Area School District, Darlington Community School District, Delvin Christian School, Delvendarian School District, Elko School District. Elkmount School District, Elkhorn Area School District, Ellsworth Community School District, Elm Brook School District, Aaron School District. Faith Christian Academy, Faith Christian School, Faith Lutheran School, Fall Creek School District, Florence County School District. Fox, Fox Valley Christian Academy, Fox Valley Lutheran High School, Frederick School District, Germantown School District, Gilman School District. Grantsburg School District, Green Bay Area Catholic Education, Hatford Joint Number One School District, Hatford Union High School, Heartland Lakeside School District. Hayward Community School District, Heritage Christian Schools, Herman Neosho Rubicon School District, Hortonville Area School District, Hudson School District. Emmanuel Lutheran College High School, Kettle Moraine Lutheran High School, Kettle Moraine School District, Kawaskam School District, Launa School District. Lemire School District, Loyal School District, Luck School District, Luther High School, Luxembourg Hasco School District. Monawak School District, Manawtewick Lutheran High School, Mary Young School District, Martin Luther School, Medford Area Public School District. Monomni Falls School District, Merton Community School District, Merrill Area Public School District, Messiah Lutheran School, Morrison Zion Lutheran School. Moisenier School District, Mount Calvary Lutheran School, Mount Zion Christian School, Makawango School District, Muskego, Norway School District. Nacida Area School District, New Auburn School District, New Berlin School District, New Hope Christian School, New London School District. New Richmond School District, Niagara School District, Monawak Area School District, Encanto Falls Public School District, Encanto Unified School District. Utzberg School District, Owen Withy School District, Lemire Eagle School District, Paris Consolidated School, Phillips School District. Poinet School District, Precinct School District, Providence Academy, Random Lake School District, Reedsburg School District. Rosendale Brandon School District, St. Aloysius Catholic School, St. Ignatius Catholic School, St. John's Lutheran School, St. Mary Catholic School. St. Mary's Visitation Catholic School, St. Matthews Lutheran School, St. Paul Lutheran School, Seva Stoppel School District, Shawano School District. Sheboygan Area School District, Shell Lake School District, Silver Lake Eleven School District, Slinger School District, Spencer School District. Star of Belheim Lutheran School, Stevens Point Christian Academy, Stockbridge School District, Stonebank School District, Surin School District. Three Lakes, or Swallow School District, Three Lakes School District, Tomorrow River School District, Union Grove Elementary. Union Grove High School, Valley Christian School, Watertown Unified School District, Waukesha School District, Wopaka School District, Wausu, no wait, it's okay, Washaw School District, Williams Bay School District, West Alice, West Milwaukee School District, West Apier School District, White Lake School District. Minnebago Lutheran Academy, Winsburg Burnham Wood School District, Zion Lutheran Schools, Zion Lutheran School of Wayside. Thanks to these one hundred thirty-four places, nearly two hundred thousand students now have a choice to wear a mask or not. Franklin is not on this list and needs to be. Do not wait, unmask the children.
I'd like to volunteer a couple minutes of my time to a young student of Franklin Public School. Would you like to say something?
Hi, I'm Natalie in fourth grade. Here are some reasons I think we do not, think we, we should not wear a mask. One is, we eat lunch all squished together and not socially distanced. Again, we need to eat, but why don't we need to social distance? It doesn't make sense. I don't wear a mask for medical reasons, and kids look at me, it's weird for people to look at me like I'm a celebrity. It is hard to focus with work, it's hard to focus on work with, with the mask, it gives me and other kids a headache. When kids are sad, sad, other kids don't know because, don't know because of the mask, but we still try to. If somebody finds out, they can't even give them a hug because of the, the social distancing. We have, we like to play games, and all the, we like to play games all the time, time, but, but only a few kids can play at a time. Then they sit waiting to play, then yell, then yell at us to include everyone. After the kids that can't, af, after the kids that did play can't catch their breath because of the mask. We also don't wear a mask outside, and that's where we're squished together the most. Kids, kids, kids that I know have, have had COVID, and I have not gotten COVID, and they said they didn't even feel sick. Thank you for your time.
Good evening again. It's a bummer, we have all this technology, and I'm unable to present my PowerPoint on the big screen for everybody to see, so I've prepared a copy that every one of you got on your table, so please follow along as I go over this information. First of all, I just wanted to mention that all these kids, like, it took like a good five minutes or six minutes to go through all the school districts that are done with mandatory masks. All those pu, like, students, and, which is like approximately two hundred thousand kids right now have a choice what to do, whether if they want, if they want to wear a mask or not. One hundred thirty-four schools and school districts and counting every day, like, I saw like about like five school, school districts joined that list yesterday. I don't know if they have, maybe they have a different CDC or DHS, or maybe those school districts are doing like really great and they have zero cases, which I didn't see, like Franklin had zero cases for like over, like for about a week, I think, and like we jumped up a little bit, like two cases, but not a huge deal out of forty-seven hundred pupils, I guess. So, and states like South Carolina and Texas, they prohibited enforcing the masks at schools, and Iowa, I think, joined yesterday or the day before yesterday. I think they have same virus, as, as far as I know. So, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. My name is Evgenia Vasilenko, my address is 3102 West Southland Drive. My kids are excited to go to school next year in person, they've been asking and asking, but masks were holding us back, that's why they were virtual. So, I don't even know what to start with today, but I will try my best. After numerous emails, requests, researchers and studies sent, and calls made to you, the school board members, we are still nowhere near coming sense of decision to let go of the unreasonable fear and mandatory mask-wearing at schools. Parents have been hopeful, disappointed, frustrated, angry, exhausted, spending nights researching, trying to find that, that one study that may change your mind and let their kids breathe freely. You've been listening to, seems like one side for over a year with no consideration of any other side of the science, data, and research, and recent studies that have proven masks ineffectiveness and adverse effects. Every day that children go to school with their masks on, parents of Franklin feel conflicted because they are allowing the abuse, fear, control, and conditioning to continue. It feels, it feels surreal to be asking somebody's permission to breathe freely, like, like, can we just give it a moment? Give it a moment to realize, like, what we are dealing with. So, going to my PowerPoint presentation. The first slide, I'm sorry, like all the parents behind me cannot see that, I really hoped they would be able to see that. So, adverse health effects of mask-wearing. So here is a source provided by Dr. Miller, and there was a Science Brief, May 7th, summary of changes by CDC on COVID-19, that says, among twelve healthy non-smoking adults, there were minimal impact on respiration when wearing a mask compared with not wearing a mask. Also, it says that additionally, no oxygen, desituation, or respiratory distress was observed among children less than two years of age when masked during normal play, while some studies have found an increase in reports of dyspnea, which is difficult to breathing. So, the point here is, the study was made in twelve, twelve healthy non-smoking adults, so, and in children under two years of old. So where is the data on school-aged children that is provided by CDC to all the school districts in this country? I don't think they released anything. So we have to look for that data somewhere else. So we have to look, uh, for that data somewhere else and find all the studies and, uh, really evaluate the mask effectiveness, which proved, uh, actually mask ineffectiveness. So if you could just, um, look at slide five, uh, where it's, where I've, um, put like several points on that. So there is very limited research on the effectiveness of masks or the potential harms of their prolonged use for children and young people. The available literature indicates little scientific evidence that mask wearing among the general public curbs disease spread. Mask ineffectiveness. We did not find evidence that surgical type of face masks are effective in reducing laboratory confirmed influenza transmission either when worn by infected person, source control, or by persons in the general community to reduce the, their susceptibility. And this is by Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. Uh, and they are talking about the surgical type face masks. And, uh, you, like, we all know that cloth masks are like, are even like less effective in that especially after like multiple, uh, washing, when the fibers wash out and, um, the masks become like less and less effective. At present, there is no direct evidence, uh, on the effectiveness of universal masking of healthy people in the community to prevent infection with respiratory viruses included COVID nineteen, the World Health Organization. Uh, the pulled results of randomized trials did not show a clear reduction in respiratory viral infection with the use of medical surgical masks during seasonal influenza. There were no clear differences between the use of medical surgical masks compared with N ninety-five P two respirators in healthcare workers when used in routine care to reduce respiratory viral infection. That's Cochrane review. Also, there is, it would appear that despite two decades of pandemic preparedness, there is considerable uncertainty to the value of wearing masks. This is the Center for Evidence-Based Medicine at the University of Oxford. And I'm just taking this time to review all the studies with you because, um, I know we all have like, you all have like full-time jobs, trying to provide for your families and like, I don't know, maybe there was not enough time for you to go over the researches that we sent to you. Um, um, so I'd like to go to mask harms, um, but that I was able to find. So the World Health Organization lists mask disadvantages, discomfort, headaches, breathing difficulties, self-contamination, facial lesions, a fa- a false sense of security and poor compliance, among others. Children are required to wear masks at school during mild physical activity and play while the, uh, World Health, uh, uh, Organization guidance clearly states. Several studies have demonstrated statistically significant, uh, de- uh, deleterious effects on various cardiopulmonary si- uh, physiologic parameters during mild to moderate exercise in healthy subjects and in those with underlying respiratory diseases. Uh, also another study, uh, found that impairments caused by wearing masks were reported by sixty-eight percent of the parents. Um, and the, the parents reported that, uh, the, uh, the mask wearing of their children. So this includes irritability, headache, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, reluctance to go to school kindergarten, mleage, uh, as impaired learning and drowsiness or fatigue. Mask wearing also greatly impacts communication and the ability to express emotions and read facial cues. This is, this can hinder language development in young children and cause them, um, unnecessary distress. Um, I'd like, uh, now to, to go to the recent article. Let me just, let me just switch to the slides. So children and COVID nineteen. Um, and this is, uh, also from the source given by, uh, Dr. Miller. So mortality in forty-three states, um, uh, is, children were at, uh, zero or zero point two one percent of all COVID nineteen deaths and ten states reported zero child deaths. In states reporting zero to, zero, uh, to point zero three of all child COVID nineteen cases resulted in, in deaths. Child mortality has been point zero six on average since AAP started data collection, uh, in May twenty-twenty for the United States. Wisconsin percent is point zero four percent currently for children out of all the cases of, uh, COVID. And, uh, Wisconsin percent is one and point one percent, uh, for all residents. Also, um, just a recent article, um, that I came across, uh, said, studies find California child hospitalizations from COVID nineteen were grossly inflated by at least forty percent. Findings likely to be the same across US. So that means that, uh, a lot of children, uh, I, I went through the article and it actually said that a lot of children who were hospitalized for a unrelated, um, reason, um, let's say like injury or, uh, or like tummy aches, uh, they were actually tested and they got to the hospital with this, uh, virus, but not because of this virus. So, um, and the article stated too, if forty percent of those hospitalizations were reported inaccurately, the actual rates are vanishingly small. And those policies implemented to protect children may have done far more harm than good. There are two important implications of these findings. The first is that the policies that disproportionately affect children like school closures or the cancellations of youth sports or summer camps, uh, were implemented after reports greatly overstated the risk of children being hospitalized from COVID nineteen. Uh, the second implication relates to the Food and Drug Administration's emergency use authorization for COVID nineteen vaccines for children. If the studies findings show that ni- COVID nineteen poses a dramatically lower incidence of pediatric hospitalizations that the data have shown thus far, then the need for the emergency authorization of vaccines for kids to protect them from going to the hospital is perhaps less than previously thought. So we've known that kids are already at low risk of getting COVID and this artic- article basically goes over that like it's, it's even less than what we've known. Scientific literature behind COVID nineteen regarding children and young people. Uh, the knowledge about COVID nineteen gathered over the last year is hardly represented in the mainstream media or public health me- messages, uh, messaging. And it confuses the public and sustains unnecessary fear. Um, the following are excerpts from the scientific literature detailing the evidence with respect to children and young people. I'm not gonna quote the studies because there's a lot of them. You have, um, an opportunity to review them on the, um, printouts that I've distributed. So I'll just go over the main points, uh, which are children and young people are less likely to get infected with SARS-CoV- two than adults. They have a mostly mild or asymptomatic, asymptomatic presentation of the disease. They have almost zero chance of dying from COVID. Asymptomatic transmission is not a major driver of outbreaks. Transmission of SARS from children to adults is minimal. Actually, it was interesting, um, that, um, uh, the studies found out that children may provide a protective effect of, uh, to adults. So children are relatively protected from novel coronavirus infection and increased household exposure to young children was associated with an, uh, attenuated risk of testing positive for SARS-CoV- and appeared to also be associated with attenuated risk of COVID nineteen disease severe enough to require hospitalization. So basically saying, it says that being around children and not social distancing from our grandmas and grandpas, which we never did in our family, uh, actually increases your chances of staying healthy and not picking up the virus. Um, also, teaching is a young profession, so only a minority of teachers are at risk from COVID nineteen. And as we know, like Franklin Public Schools, they, like, mostly have teachers, um, vaccinated already. So it's almost, the risk is almost nonexistent then. And teachers are at a high risk of getting infected compared to other professions. Um, also, it was interesting to find, um, the information on, uh, updated PCR tests and criteria for assessing freedom for infection. This information comes, uh, from, uh, Sweden. So it says, "The PCR technology used in tests to detect viruses cannot distinguish between viruses capable of infecting cells and viruses that have been neutralized by the immune system." And therefore, there, this test cannot be used to determine whether someone is contagious or not. That's interesting, right? We were testing kids, but we don't know, like, if they're asymptomatic, basically, they do not pose a risk to us. Also, they, they, they have new recommended criteria for assessing freedom from infection and, uh, which is based on stable clinical improvement with freedom for over, uh, from fever for at least two days and that, uh, at least seven days have passed since the onset of symptoms. This is like very common to what we've always known, like, we do not send kids to school with cold. Like, and if they have fever, so we wait like a day or two to send them back to, to school, very similar. And asymptomatic transmission, they also, like, there was no change to their statement that the virus most often spreads through people who have symptoms and asymptomatic transmission is minimal. Um, a couple of things that I've also wanted to mention. More reasons why masks should be optional and, in my opinion, should have always been optional, which is my opinion, or at least they should have been optional since March thirty-first. So, no, we don't have currently, uh, any state, country or city mask mandate. The Wisconsin Supreme Court decision of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one stated that executive orders, um, number eighty-two and ninety, both of which declare public health emergency in response to COVID nineteen were unlawful under Wisconsin statute, uh, three hundred twenty-three point ten. As a necessary consequence, all executive actions and orders issued pursuant to the powers triggered by the emergency declaration are likewise void. That means, um, I've got a response from, um, from the school board that the, the Supreme Court didn't decide on the mask mandate. Actually did decide and they said the mask mandate was actually void. Second, the emergency, the emergency use authorization for cloth masks. I did a research, I looked up, I found all the documents saying when the, the emergency use authorization was issued, what it included, what's the, what's the termination date of it. So it looks like it, uh, it was, uh, issued on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty and was valid for one year unless extended. And I haven't found anything about extensions of this, uh, emergency use authorization for cloth masks. So, um, as of right now it stands, like, it expired on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. So cloth masks are not approved by FDA products for everyday, um, as a medical device. They were approved as a, like, for medical use, um, in population only under emergency use authorization. So basically, you were right saying that it's not a medical device. It is not a medical device, but it was approved for a medical reason, like for use, like, as a medical device, but it's over, it's over. So who is gonna be liable for wearing a non-medical device on our kids' faces? Uh, who's gonna pay, uh, the bills for the doctor's visits, uh, once the problem arises? And now that a lot of, like, kids are, like, starting to get respiratory problems and, and like facial problems, uh, it's all on us and parents and, uh, like, we are not very excited about that. Um, another very important aspect of emergency use authorization was that patients had the right to refuse. Parents, I want you to hear that. Under federal law, you should have been made aware that the face coverings required in the classroom were issued under emergency use authorization and that you had the right to refuse. There should have been made available also, so just, yeah. Like, I, I have never received it in communication from the Franklin Public School Districts that, uh, there is a right to refuse and how we can make it. Uh, there was information, uh, given to us that the medical, like, we can still, that you would still, uh, accept the medical exemption, but there was no information, like a special form that we can sign or how we can submit it or any other, uh, forms, uh, or exemptions that we can refer to. Even the governor's mask mandate had like a whole list of exemptions for people with medical, psychological and, uh, other reasons for, like, why a person could skip that. Because, and I, I haven't seen this information from the Franklin Public Schools. And, um, one more thing, there should have been made available a way to report adverse effects of wearing a mask of face covering. And I haven't seen a single form or single, uh, document where we could report a headache or like, or all the adverse effects that, uh, were mentioned above. I think that, that was not very fair to, uh, parents, to say the least. Um, I'd like also, I would like also to mention, uh, I did some research on ethics of this question and, um, I got them from CDC site. So this CDC Public Health Ethics Resources. Uh, one of the resources is Public Health Code of Ethics. And, um, this is under Human Rights and Civil Liberties. "The effective and ethical practice of public health depends upon social and cultural conditions of respect for personal autonomy, self-determination, privacy and the absence of domination in its many interpersonal and institutional forms. Contemporary public health respects and helps sustain those social and cultural conditions." Another document, Principles of the Ethical Prac- Practice of Public Health, uh, states, "Public health should achieve community health in a way that respects the rights of individuals in the community." Also, the CDC site has the Regulatory and Ethical Codes. And one of the codes is the Nuremberg, Nuremberg Code, which, like, the ethical guideline written as a result of World War II Nazi war crimes against humanity. Uh, it's, uh, mostly pertains to the experiments, but, um, I take that what we are doing right now is an experiment on our kids and on all the population. And the first, the very first point of this Nuremberg Code is "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential." This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion. Also, uh, the subject should be informed of, uh, should be made known of him, uh, the nature, duration and purpose of the experiment. So we know the nature, we know the purpose, do we have the duration? We've never been informed of the duration. We just keep, keep moving the goalposts. We could keep moving the deadlines. Uh, parents get hopeful. I know a lot of parents send their kids to schools hoping that the mandate will end some, somewhere in the middle. And I do not agree that parents understood that it's gonna last the whole year. I know parents who, like, I was one of the parents considering sending kids to school, uh, thinking that, okay, the mandate is gonna be over, so they will drop the masks like late September or October and the rest of the year is gonna be good. No, it didn't happen. Something told me that it's not gonna happen and it didn't. I was right. Um, so, um, and one of the, one of the points of the Nuremberg Code as well, that during the course of the experiment, the human subject should be at liberty, at liberty, note that word liberty, to bring the experiment to an end if it has the, it has reached a physical or mental state where continuation of the experiment seemed to him to be impossible. I think we've had enough. We are all sick and tired of the masks. Do we have the liberty to bring this experiment to an end? Today's article, I had to update the slideshow just an hour before this meeting. Masks. Yesterday, the University of Louisville released a study showing that eighty percent of US states mandated masks during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The study concluded that while mandates induced greater mask compliance, they did not pre- The study concluded that while mandates induced greater mask compliance, they did not predict lower growth rates when community spread was low or high. Using data from the CDC covering multiple seasons of the year, the study found that mask mandates and the use are not associated with lower COVID-19 spread among US states. Researchers said, "Our findings do not support the hypothesis that transmission rates decrease with greater public mask use. Masks may promote social cohesion as railing symbols during a pandemic, but risk compensation can also occur." So what's the risk? Prolonged mask use greater than four hours per day encourages dehydration. The risk of bacterial infection increases. By obscuring non-verbal communication, masks interfere with social learning in children. Likewise, masks can distort verbal speech and remove visual cues to the detriment of individuals with hearing loss. Also, another study, which I didn't include on the slideshow, it actually talked about, it said, it discussed the use of masks. So the use of masks between two people and when they speak is equivalent to hearing loss. And right now, we have, like, microphones in front of us, and when you speak, we can understand. By the way, when the children were up here talking about their works, like, I could not understand all of them, even like with the microphone, like, right by their mouth, because the masks, they are really in the way. I've heard from, I've read and I've heard from teachers, it's hard to understand kids, they have to come really close to understand what kids are saying when they are reading, when they are talking. It's really complicated conditions of work right now. So, after reviewing all these studies, does all of this sound like a safer choice for our children? We are looking at one side, but I will looking at all of the other sides. In my opinion, we are not acting in the best interest of our district students and families. Since all requests, we put the masks on the agenda or hold a special meeting and discuss it with parents, have been ignored for weeks. There was one survey sent out last summer, that would be great to have a couple more surveys, but I've only seen one. And then another one was with the condition, when we, like, if we keep the masks, what would we choose? In-person or virtual? I wanted to put it, like, I don't want to send my kids to school with such conditions at all, but there was no such an option. I, there was no possibility to comment on that. Also, so it's deeply frustrating that parents are being ignored by the school board when you are supposed to be our representatives, and your policy clearly states, "The board is committed to seeking the input of constituents." Here's our input, please hear it, please listen to our, we are, we are not bad people wanting that. We are not trying to kill anybody, like somebody say. It's normal to have questions and discussions. We have a new normal, seems like it's a different normal. The new normal is the fear of speaking out, the fear of the shame that is being directed at those who speak out, and the censorship for doing so. Nowadays, it's pretty easy to lose a job because of speaking out, or even receive death wishes for questioning masks, lockdowns, quarantines, and vaccines. I, yeah, I've heard that, I've experienced that, I've, like, I've had people yelling at me at the store, and this is not a pleasant experience. I'm almost done. So, we are talking about staying safe, but I will, I will stay human, sick until proven healthy is as tyrannical, just as guilty until proven innocent. It is really ridiculous, disheartening, sad and scary that a right to breathe freely has to be even discussed. So, what do parents want for their children? We want respect for the rights of parents to decide what's best for their children, and we want involvement in the decisions for the requirements put upon our children. What do parents expect of the school board today? Many of the parents in the attendance of this meeting probably voted to elect some of the current school board members, one of you, and all of you elected school board members swore an oath to follow the law and to also represent your parent constituents. We request that one of you make a motion tonight to end all mask requirements and to mask, to make mask-wearing optional effective immediately. This is your responsibility to your parent constituents. It takes only two members of the school board to motion, and a second, a discussion and vote. Do this now, do this tonight.
Mr. and Mrs. Pandy, would you like to start yours?
Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you do your job, talk to the parents you represent.
My name is Lori Pandy, address is 9848 Westbury Gasway. This is my second time here, and I don't really relish this as much. I'm sure you guys don't either, but here we are. Thank you for making the time to hear our comments tonight. Last week, I was driving to the Education and Community Center, and on the way, I passed the middle school, and outside, all the students were outside, it just happened to be probably recess time. So I was really happy to see all these students, but then I just broke my heart because they all had their masks on. When I went into the building, the sun was shining, when I came out, it was raining. And I saw all these students just standing out there in the rain, like, they weren't moving, wasn't probably hard enough to really be moving inside, but there they were. And I thought to myself, hmm, I kind of wonder, you know, do they have another mask when they get back into the school, or are they planning to wear this wet, gross mask inside? What are they going to do? Once the mask gets wet, it's harder to breathe through and can harbor bacteria and fungus. I know that you have changed the mask rules, so masks are no longer required outside, but it's not enough, we need more. Did the medical experts really think about all these scenarios? Did they think about students going outside in the rain? Did they think about them standing outside of the buses, waiting for the bus to come and their mask on? And I'm sure, these are kids we're talking about, some elementary students, even 4K students, their parent is not there to help them. I know they have a teacher, but the teacher can't be in charge of 20-some students and making sure they all are changing their masks regularly. Is wearing a mask really in the best interest for our kids? Franklin schools are investing a lot of time and money in social-emotional learning. In my son's first grade class, there's time dedicated to this topic, and it has been since the beginning of the year. The other day, the teacher asked students to make a face related to an emotion, and then practice one of the methods to calm themselves. Evan, I need you. Do it again. Okay, there it was. So, you can see his face, it was an angry little face, I don't like to see it myself. But for virtual students, this was possible, because they don't have a mask on, and their teacher can see their whole face. For in-person students, I don't know how they can do it. How can you teach social-emotional learning when you can only see part of a person's face? All I can see are your eyes, it's like, I don't know. Are you sticking your tongue out at me right now? I don't know. You know, it's, nobody knows how you're feeling, we can't see it. People aren't meant to wear these masks. According to Dr. Alice Kuo, I'm not sure about her last name, president of the Southern California Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, "Wearing masks throughout the day can hinder language and socio-emotional development, particularly for younger children." The voices of teachers and other students are muffled through face masks, making learning more difficult. Other people have brought this up as well, and even I struggled too with the students that were here before. I could hear some of them, but others I just couldn't because of the mask. One of the biggest ways Franklin School Board can boost social-emotional development is by unmasking the children. Let them see each other's faces, so they can see how their friends are feeling. My son's teacher is able to see when a student is upset or sad, and will ask them more about how they're feeling. Every day, she starts the day with, "How are you feeling? Who's in the green zone? You're like, kind of happy, ready to learn. Who's in the red zone? Who's feeling angry?" And she can tell, she knows, there's 26 kids, but she knows these kids by now, they're like a family, and she knows when somebody's hurting. She knows somebody has lost a grandparent, there's been a lot of that this year, and she knows, she can see it in these kids' faces. When a mask covers half of a student's face, it's just hard to see when there is a problem. So I think in-person students are really struggling. Our son is a virtual student. We chose him to be virtual, and I've told you this, because we were concerned about the possible back and forth of being in school and out of school, having him tested. We had no idea how that was going to go. We also, one of the main reasons was, I don't want him wearing a mask for seven hours a day. It just seems unreasonable. The reason we are here is to advocate for change in summer school and the 2021, 2022 school year. The board has indicated that they expect masks will be an agenda item on the 6/23 or 7/14 meeting. I am here to ask for a decision at this board meeting, so that masks can be optional for summer school. The next board meeting on 6/23 is after summer school has already started. It started a couple days before that. By the 7/24 board meeting, summer school is almost over, so it really doesn't matter. I'm hoping you can come to a decision and think about the summer school impact. "This instant," he says. My epiphany from the last meeting was how glad I was that my son was virtual, since he hasn't been conditioned to wearing a face mask. However, one of the biggest downfalls of being virtual is also a lack of socialization. Yes, my son could have stayed online after school and chatted with his classmates, they regularly talk on screen, but I didn't want him staring in front of the computer screen any longer than he already did. Before this year, he had minimal screen time, and now that number is like through the roof because of his schooling. He has signed up and accepted into the summer school program. I'm hoping that we can send him, so he can talk and play with other kids. He doesn't know hardly anyone in the school district, since he never went in person to Franklin Public Schools. By going to summer school, he would be able to meet new people before the beginning of the 2021, 22 school year. I'm hoping you guys can come to a decision for the effect of the summer school, which needs to happen like now. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Benea Pandy, and I just wanted to point out that we're parents, we're everyday people. We're not experts in virology, epidemiology, psychology, politics, public health, any of those things, we're just people. We're taxpayers. We're residents, we're immigrants, we're citizens, just people. We, the people, ask that we have a choice in how we live our lives and how we educate our children. We need your help. Let us decide. The choices in front of us are mask up and learn, or participate in trials of a new cure and learn. Those aren't good choices. There is a third choice out there. And we will make those choices, but we are not going to be masking up, and we're not going to be participating in a trial, because that's what this is. Help us educate our children and create critical thinkers. We are observing, we are learning, we digest the information, and we make choices. We don't just take orders from above, we don't just believe in science. What we are going to do is look at the facts and make choices based on those. We're going to teach our kids to do the same, and the risk of that is, of course, we get more people like us. And he's watching us right now, he's watching me right, he watches all the things that Lori and I do, and he makes choices based on those. So we have to deal with the consequences of teaching somebody to be that free spirit, but he is going to do that, and what we want to do is encourage you to do the same thing, which is allow kids that you're teaching to have choices. I'm gonna end with something, because all the comments I was going to make have been made already, but I want to point something out. In looking at the self-evaluation the board did in spring of 21, in March of 21, I think you did a self-evaluation, one of the topics you looked at was, "Please describe a situation where the board has considered input from multiple perspectives." That was on your self-evaluation. Some of the comments in there were, "The decisions about how we proceed this year in March of 21, looking back to 20, the decisions about how we proceed this year included parent input that resulted in offering choice." Good job. "The pandemic response, good job. The board considered input from multiple perspectives when deciding if a virtual option should be available for our students in the district." Good job. "The pandemic is a prime example. We got feedback from parents, staff, students, and administrators. Using that, a plan was developed for educating the students according to the predominant feedback and recommendations." Good job. We're giving you feedback right now, we want you to do the same thing, because, look forward, March of 22, you'll be looking back and doing a self-evaluation of the exact same thing. How are you gonna write it up that time? Is it going to be, well, we stifled a class of parents, a group of parents who came and expressed concerns about the approaches, he said, nah, we're not interested. We're just gonna follow the advice of the experts, because the experts are going to quote information based on what they understand. You can look at the exact same material, then form your own opinions. That's what we do, that's what he's going to do. So, please, think of how you'll be responding to the evaluation that you will do of your work in March of 22. Give us those choices, that's all we ask. Having said that, I think that's where I want to close on, so thank you so much for your time, I appreciate the patience, but I would love to hear a motion for a vote, or a second to that motion for a vote, and have that, have that, have that agenda topic be discussed now and voted on, because masks can be optional, they don't have to be required. That's a choice you're making. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Hayes, I was here last time, and I spoke. I'm not gonna spout data off, because you guys all know it, if you choose to listen or agree with it, that's on you. However, I'm gonna just vent some of my frustrations, because that's what I, it's my style. My daughter goes to kid care before school in the morning, and now that it's nice out there outside, so she puts this mask, they're told they can wear it now, and my husband drops her off, and they don't have to wear it now, I was trying to say, and they say, "Well, put it under your chin." And my husband's like, "No, put it in your backpack." And the lady, when he got in his car, pointed to my daughter and had her, "Go get it out of her backpack and put it under her chin." She's starting her school day off sweaty, running around outside, and it's under her chin, and that's the start of her day, at seven or eight something in the morning. And then has to go to class, wearing that nasty mask, and then going to eat lunch, and she's six years old, so she's not neat, she's messy, she comes home with like her lunch all over, her mask. I mean, it's disgusting, why should these children have to wear these masks with stuff in them? That is so nasty, and then her face breaks out, and who has to deal with that? Me and my husband have to deal with this. And this is emotional. And this is emotional pain to her because she's also, she feels embarrassed about it. So that's one of my frustrations. And then another one of my frustrations is that I don't understand why there's no religious exemptions in Franklin Public Schools. Are people in this city not religious? Is anybody here religious? It doesn't feel that way, but I have strong religious values, and I don't want my daughter wearing a mask. It goes against our religion to put coverings over our face. How come that's not even an option? It doesn't even make any sense to me at all. Totally. Why don't I have a choice? I feel discriminated against. My family feels discriminated against. Also, why should I have to go out of my way, spend my money to get a doctor excuse for my daughter when it's not even a medical device, as we were told? That makes no sense to me at all as well. And I know a lot of parents I've talked to feel the same way about it. It's not a medical device. So why do they get a doctor excuse? Totally unbelievable. Why should we have to fight so hard for our basic rights? It is unconstitutional. It's wrong. We are American citizens. That is not what this country is founded on. We're founded on choice and freedom and rights. And right now, we're headed in a direction in this district that I grew up in, and I'm, I hope I can still be proud of. But it's in a direction that I, I'm not proud of, and I don't even know if I want to send my child here in the fall. Because I want some answers. What's happening in the fall? I want our children unmasked tonight, but what's happening in the fall? We don't have solid enough evidence to know if we should send our kids back. So I'm not gonna wait around. I'm doing my research on schools, private schools. I'll pay the money. I have no problem with the money. I'd rather pay the money than have my daughter wear a mask for another day. But I'll go elsewhere, and that's money lost, and I have another child coming up. More money lost. And I know lots of parents, a lot of them have left to go with their children, but they're talking about the same thing. All this money lost to keep a few people who want to wear masks happy. I don't understand that. It's backward. It's not what USA stands for. Just some things are confusing. My daughter went outside today with her class. They got to read a book. So I'm happy they got to go outside because it's last time in the mask. So she's out there, and she tells me that she got to pull up a blanket. And her teacher's great. I have no problem with her teacher. Her teacher is wonderful. She's trying to make everything very, very normal. No cut on her teacher. But they got to sit on the same blanket outside. And I says, "You got to sit on the same blanket?" She's like, "Yeah, mommy." I said, "Was your mask on?" "No, we got to have our masks off because we're outside now." So she's all excited because they don't have to wear it outside, which I feel is like a little pat on the head to a child. "Oh yeah, you can take your mask off outside now." So we're placated a little bit, but we're really not. Because we're not gonna go away and we're not gonna drop it. We feel this is just ridiculous. I mean, it's almost like more insulting to say, "Take it off outside and just cancel it." Make it optional. Because it's, it doesn't make sense. So she got to sit on a blanket with her friend at recess, or not recess, it was an extra reading time. They got to go outside. So I guess they were safe because they're outside from the COVID. They were next to each other, but they're safe, I suppose, because they're outside. Our kids hang out after school together. We've had playdates all year. We didn't stop our playdates. We didn't mask up. We didn't do any of that. Our kids are fine. We're all still alive. We're okay. We still do playdates. We've got together with parents and hung out. It's happening. So I'll be the first to sign a waiver. If there's a waiver to send my daughter next year on a mask, I'll sign the waiver. Give it to me now. I'll sign a waiver. I'll take whatever chances come my way. I'll sign the waiver. I'm sure everybody else is in the same place as I am. So like I was trying to, I'll wrap up with, about the placating us, I feel you're just trying to take the edge off for going into summer break. I don't know, but I like to think the best of everybody, but I haven't heard back from anybody in a long time. The first time I sent something out, I always got back to it, and I thought, "Cool. That's really respectful." But I haven't been heard back from as well, from anybody. No phone calls. I left messages, emails. My mother's left messages, my friends. I mean, nobody. That's disheartening. So we feel placated. You're just trying to pat us on the head for the summer. Maybe we'll go away. Maybe we'll give hope for the fall. I don't trust you guys for the fall. I'm not gonna lie. I don't. I don't feel with the information we've been told that we're gonna be good to go in the fall for optional, for us who want that choice. Can you guys tell us if we will have a choice for the fall so we can make other arrangements? I mean, I signed up for a slot, so do we get answers if we signed up for a slot, a speaking slot? I guess not. Okay. Wow. So we need more answers. I'm gonna start looking. I'm already looking at schools. You guys are gonna lose money. And like other people says, we're gonna go to steps to find other people to sit in your seats, because this is beyond ridiculous.
My husband couldn't make it tonight. I just took a break to give other people opportunity to speak. But he recorded a message for the school board. He had to go on the road because we run our own business. And it so happened that one of the drivers needed a break. And my husband, being a truck driver, he had to go and like do, like make living for the family and save our own business. So I'll just try to turn it on and put it really close to the microphone. Please hold on with me.
Ms. Vassalanga, how long will this message be?
The message is a couple minutes long. It's not half an hour.
Ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, I couldn't come today and stand up for my kids.
Can you hear it? Can you hear it again? Thank you.
For their greater goods. I'm not going to ask your back for anything. I will tell you a story called "One Lone Night," and I wish I could see your eyes while you're listening. I was told this story by my mom, Irina. She's in here today. Hi, ma'am. And she can confirm every word of it. And it's about one Ukrainian family and one girl. Not her, not my mom. That girl, Sophia, was born in 1927 in a hardworking and wealthy family with Polish roots. They owned plenty of fields or tards, a beef farm and a fish farm, cattle. Of course, they hired other people from their village to do some farm work for them. Everyone was happy, and this family was known well beyond their neighborhood. Then in 1940s, the World War II started. Western Ukraine happened to be right in between Nazi Germany and Soviet Union. The hardest battles in that war were held on that land for almost five years. When the war ended in 1945, Soviets occupied that part of Ukraine where this family lived for a long time. Now they had to identify themselves as Soviet people, not Ukrainians. Those were extremely hard times to survive. And they not only did that, but somehow managed to save some of their farms, restored what was destroyed after bombings and military interventions. Those times were just as difficult for the whole Soviet Union as the country struggled from wild hunger. Right after that war ended, one late summer night, some people with red stripes around their arms approached that family house and demanded all their food to be given to the Soviet people for the greater good in the name of Soviets. All food meant, all cattle, horses, wheat, rye that was stocked for the next season, and every single edible item in the house. Of course, the leader, the head of the household, Sophia's father refused. Him, Sophia's mother, brothers, and cousins that were visiting them that night, they were all murdered that night, stabbed to death with no mercy to anyone. Sophia somehow managed to hide in a pile of hay next to her window. That's how she stayed alive. Those people knew there should have been a girl. They poked a pile with rods, but didn't find her somehow. At dawn, when everything calmed down, she got out and ran. Of course, she saw the burglarized house. Everything was upside down. All her family laying there in the puddles of blood. She ran to the neighbors for the shelter, for possible help. Maybe for justice, knocked on the doors, but nobody answered. Nobody wanted to help her. Nobody except one person who gave her some bread and told her to get away. Everybody was frightened, frightened by the Soviet regime, by those people with red stripes. Sophia was a teenager. At that time, she lost all her family, all her belongings during that long night. Of course, she knew those men with red stripes. They lived in the same village. They worked as seasonal workers on their family farm every year. They had known each other for many years and lived in one strong community up until that night. Why did they do that to her? Why did they turn evil all of a sudden and call themselves polizei? It was not police, not even similar. It was polizei. It was more like managers. Because of the red stripe, that's the answer. Because authorities gave them some little power to rule or to be in control of other people like them. That little piece of red rug was their power. Did you know who is the best supervisor or overseer for the slaves? One of them, one of those slaves. And one of their slaves is the most ruthless, inhumane superintendent. The Soviet regime did the same. It gave them the power. They were allowed to do whatever they want in the name of revolution, in the name of Soviets, for the greater good. Of course, it later grew into this violent abuse of power. I don't want my kids to grow up in the same environment, same regime. And I am blaming you, each one of you sitting here in front of us, of doing the same what Soviets did. What happened in our school not a long time ago with teachers assigning some of the kids as masked managers is totally the same. It could have happened only because of your poor management. You might not have given the direct order to do that, but it happened under your supervision. That regime is not in the nearest future. It's not close. It's here already. How are these masked managers, kids, different from those polizeis? They're giving unnecessary power to control and berate their classmates.
I don't think we need to be, I don't think we need to be compared to the Soviet regime. Thank you.
This was my husband's message. I would like you to respect his opinion. It's just a minute left, probably. And he wanted to make the comparison between the red stripes that the polizei wore and the masks, which are kind of giving power to the kids to yell at each other and berate each other. But, okay, I will let you know that his message was interrupted. It said...
All right. Item six, consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Number seven, school board announcements. Any announcements by school board members? Item eight, school board calendar. Regular meeting, education meeting, sorry, regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021, at the ECC at 6 o'clock. Regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, July 14th, 2021, at the ECC. Number nine, update from the district administrator, Dr. Miller.
Okay, just a couple announcements tonight. I'm proud to share that our girls' basketball team earned first-team academic all-state honors this season with a 4.16 average GPA. This was the highest across all divisions and both genders in the state of Wisconsin. On June 2nd, we're looking forward to hosting our senior honors night. Families and students receiving awards will be present at this event. We're also looking forward to our graduation event on June 19th to be held at the American Family Field. We're continuing to work on the refresh of the district's coherence plan. At the June 23rd Board of Education meeting, we'll be sharing with the board the new plan and our annual scorecard for the 21-22 school year. And finally, tonight, you will see the refresh of the district's communication plan. The goals of the plan have been specifically designed to support the goals of our coherence plan. As we finalize the coherence plan, we'll fine-tune the communications plan to ensure that it supports the work that we're doing. So that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Principal Action Plan Updates, Southwood Glen Elementary and Pleasantview Elementary, Dr. Mowbray and Dr. Fokler.
Hello, we want to thank you for allowing us some time tonight to talk about our action plans and our work at Southwood Glen and Pleasantview. Again, my name is Bridgette Mowbray. I'm the principal at Southwood Glen, and with me tonight is...
Jamie Fekler, principal at Pleasantview. Thanks again for having us.
We're gonna start out and share a little bit of an overview of our plan, and you have our report to go into more depth. But we wanted to also highlight a strategy. So today we'll be talking about the classroom strategy of small groups and give a little bit of information of what that looks like in both a kindergarten and a third grade classroom. As we start, we just want to, again, you have our action plan, so you have more depth about that report. But just wanted to talk about the three goals and a little bit of progress and next steps in those goals. So the first goal of student engagement that we've been working on, one of the measures that we've been making progress in is I can be myself in my classroom. So there are surveys that show that that was one of the areas that we wanted to maintain high scores or increase scores. And to do that work, we've been working with social emotional learning and working specifically on identity and belonging in the classroom. And most recent survey does show upticks in those scores, so we're proud of that work. In our second goal, looking at student learning, we've been working as professional learning communities, and our teams, our grade-level teams of teachers, meet twice weekly and really looking at creating high-performing teams and using high-leverage strategies to make sure we're getting the optimal results for all students. Some of the work that I wanted to highlight is the use of data to drive our instruction and doing some intentional planning at the front to make sure that we're prepared to meet the needs of all of our learners. And that's work that we will continue to dig into further as we continue to grow and measure our impact. And our third goal of employee engagement, we have solid scores in the 90th percentiles, but wanted to maintain that and increase. And we're looking at specifically at the area of, well, I should say, our high measure is in the area of teams. So that really talks to that professional learning community work. But we have had 100% agreeing on that my team has my back and I work well with my team in matters that matter. When we look at what we wanted to increase in that area, we were looking at recognition as being one of the lower scores. And so that's something that we're continuing to explore of what that can look like, increasing areas of recognition, not just from the principal, but from other avenues. So we are continuing to look into that. We do have check-in teams that are working on some of those pieces. So that's something that we're continuing to explore. And just as a general next step, we're working together as a school improvement team on our June 11th professional development. together as a school improvement team on our June 11th professional development, where we're excited to kick off the new coherence plan, talk about equity non-negotiables and how those are embedded in our plan, and then celebrate the success of our school year.
All right, as we take a look at Pleasantview's plan, we've had the opportunity to look at growing student engagement and achievement in the first two goals that we've been focused on this year. And we've been able to measure those areas, first of all, that student engagement goal area by pulse surveys. I've been really proud of the work that our teachers have done and our students around this goal, because we've seen engagement actually climb to higher levels than we've ever seen before, even in a pandemic year. I'm really, really proud of the work that our staff and students have done and our parents together. We have seen our favorability scores grow to over 80% in our areas of focus in each grade level. So we've had teachers identify areas that they wanted to grow in relation to that pulse survey, and they've included students in that conversation. It's very different from years past, where we would do that work with focus groups across the school. We put that right in the hands of our teachers, and then our teachers had those conversations with their classes and determined what actions they should take. And we've seen, again, those scores climb because students, again, are owning that engagement. They're owning their engagement. When we take a look at the growth of student achievement, you can see our MAP data, but that's only one measure of data. We've had the opportunity to develop our professional learning plans. So each teacher has developed a plan based on a theory of action of what they saw in their class, what they needed to grow, their students. Not necessarily what we needed to grow in our school, but what we needed to grow in that individual class. And we've seen gains in that, and the teachers have gotten feedback through observations, through their collaborative time, and then also through our professional learning that we've had. It's been really exciting work to see the progress of each of our classes and also see teachers focused on research-based best practices, not just pulling strategies out of the sky, but pulling them from research-based sources of people that we're rooting our work in, with some of Hattie's work and Jenny Donahue's work around collective efficacy. Now, as we look at our better place to work goal area, again, I'm really proud of the work that we've done. We've grown staff engagement to new levels at Pleasantview this year. We started around the 90% mark in terms of favorability, and we've grown tremendously this year. You can see those results over the course of the year. And I believe that's really due to increased communication, increased rounding meetings. I had the opportunity to work through three full cycles of rounding with our staff, and that has opened up opportunities for me to connect and get to know them even better and also get to know what needs they have on a daily basis so that I can address them and so that we can address them as a school community. And I believe that our staff has responded to that, and has seen that as an area that we've grown together, not separately, not me independently from them, but us together as a school. So again, the work has been difficult work, but we've identified some big themes across the school and have done some good work there. So I'm, again, really proud of our efforts. Next steps for us, as we take a look at the Professional Development Day on June 11th, that's something that all of our elementary buildings are focused in on, and then also meeting with our school improvement teams to wrap up the year and look at where we want to begin the year next year, where we want to launch. And for me, that comes in the new principal transition plan that I've already started to put together for whoever comes and takes over Pleasantview. And I'm ready to share this great information with them, whoever that is, and set them off on the right foot. So thank you again for hearing about our report. We're going to come back to questions at the very end, but we're going to share a strategy that's gone really well for us at both of our buildings. So as we flip to the next slide here, we're going to go through the why, the what, and the how of small groups. So there's a little bit of information on the front end here, and then we're going to give you the opportunity to hear a condensed version of small groups at the kindergarten level and the third grade level. So the why of small groups, really, the purpose is that we have a clear purpose for gathering students and that they know that as readers. And we want them to be called together in a way that is going to make sense for them, where we demonstrate they have a need in a specific area, and we're going to target instruction for them in that particular area. So you're going to see that in the video, and I want you to be able to just know that on the front end as you watch that. On our next slide is the what of what small groups are. So the teaching is really short and clear, and this is really an opportunity for kids to explore what they need to do next as a learner. And the teacher, what you're going to see in the videos is just one time that they're meeting with them. Teachers can convene these groups often multiple days throughout the course of several weeks as they're working on increasing the skill or strategy that they're teaching. And then finally, know that the groups are flexible. It's not that there are students who have these needs and they're always meeting, but we're looking for skill gaps for students and also for students to excel. And this is an opportunity for all students to grow, and it's an integral part of our workshop time for students. So now, on the next slide, you're going to see the how of our small groups, and this is a kindergarten example. And I have, we have listed on the slide there the listen fours during this four-minute-and-26-second video. So I want you just to pay attention to the language that the teacher's using and also what the students are doing. I know it may be a little bit more difficult to see from some perspectives, but you'll see those listen fours come up on the screen as well. So I'll let Mr. Kafka play it for you here.
Friends, I called you to my table today because I wanted to show you something really cool that I found in a book. I wanted to show you something really cool that I found in a book. Can I show you? This is a book, yeah. I know you haven't been here the past couple of days, but we've been reading this in reading workshop. It's called Quack's Red Boots. And as I was reading this story about Quack, I saw what was happening, right? He was talking about really loving his red boots. He wore them everywhere. But then, his sister asked to borrow them, and he said no, because he loves them so much. And his brother asked to borrow them, and he still said no. And then, I got to this page right here. Can I tell you what I found? As I was reading this page of the book, I opened it up, and I noticed a note. I read that note. It says, "He lost his boots and cried." And then they drew a little picture of a broken heart and a sad face. Guys, did you know that a kindergartner did that note? A kindergartner decided that they really wanted to remember what was happening on this page. So they did something called a stop and jot. Can you show me with your hands? Stop and jot. Jot means like write a little note. This kindergartner got to a part in the book that they really wanted to remember in their retell, and they did a stop and jot. They didn't write a lot of words, and they didn't draw a big detailed picture, but this picture, this note, tells me what the character's thinking and what happened in the book. It's talking about the event. He lost his boots, and the feeling, right? He cried. That's exactly what happened. And then I kept reading, and she did it again. Here, they were looking for his boots, and look. In the picture, I see that Quack is crying because he wants his red boots. And the kindergarten author added another note. What did they say?
Oh, no.
Oh, no. And they drew a picture of how they thought Quack was feeling. What do you see in that picture?
My heart.
Quack is crying. What else? A couple of broken hearts, right? And tears. That really lets me know that Quack is feeling sad. Doing a stop and jot is helpful because it really helps us remember the events in the story, what's happening, and it helps us remember our characters' feelings. That way, when we get to an end of the book to retell, we can really think, what happened in this book? How are the characters feeling? You can look back at your stop and jots to help you remember. I was thinking that we could add a stop and jot to this book together. What do you think?
Yeah.
So I'll review this page. "You could wear my pink boots," said his sister. "No," said Quack. "I want my red boots." "You can wear my blue boots," said his brother. "No," said Quack. "I want my red boots." He began to cry. These are the ones that I had your friends do the other day. "We will help you look for your red boots," said Quack's sister. Quack's sister and brother looked everywhere for the red boots. "Look, here are," said Quack's brother. "We found your red boots." I think this would be a great place to do a stop and jot. What is happening on this page? What is this feeling? And do a quick stop and jot. A stop and jot might be a small picture. It might be a sentence or a few words. Something that tells you what's happening on this page. A stop and jot is a great tool that readers can use in storybooks. When you do a stop and jot, it helps you remember more about the events and the feelings in the story. And then, when you get to the end of your book, you'll know exactly what to retell. Are you ready to try this on your own today in your own books at your table? All right, you can always do a stop and jot in your books.
So that was a kindergarten example at Pleasantview, and we want to show you what that looks like in a little bit older grade. So this is going to be a third-grade classroom at Southwood Glen. You're looking for the same listen. Actually, the active engagement, you'll notice earlier on, she alludes to what they'll be doing later in the lesson. So just for the sake of time, it's when she refers to it, but they're kind of, same kind of queuing. Thank you.
All righty, writers, are you ready? So I gathered you back here today so we can take a look at our lead, because as fairy tale writers, we want to make sure that we include three key factors in our leads. Okay? And these three factors are the characters, so introducing our characters to our reader. The setting, making sure that we turn on the lights in our setting to make sure that the reader understands where in the world is this story taking place. Lastly, hinting at the problem. So that's just giving the reader a little hint as to what's to come later on in this story. Okay? So we're going to take a look at two samples that includes some of these craft moves, and we're going to see if we can try them out in our own leads that we've already started drafting. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, before we begin though, I want you to take a look at your first scene, and I want you to turn and talk with your partner. Did you by any chance already include one of these factors? Go ahead, turn and talk with your partner. Show them where you're doing it.
I think I...
I don't...
I introduced the characters a little bit.
I did.
Because I got Dogman...
I added a lead right here, but I did add the characters right here.
Because Dogman, he's like the main...
The little red man in the story.
His name was Aliana.
But I don't think that...
The setting was...
Aliana was in her house in a...
Sierra for him.
Because she... Writers, what I am noticing is that we did a really good job of including the characters right away on our scene, which you agree with me. I heard everyone say, like, yep, I included these characters. They're here. They're present. Okay? So maybe we might want to focus on including the setting or hinting at the problem, or we're going to learn how to do that with our two samples. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so here's the first one. So listen very carefully. "Dad, Griffin said. Can I get a pet?" "Well, a pet is a lot of responsibility," Dad said. "Please," Griffin said. "If I see that you are responsible enough, you can get a pet," said Griffin's dad. The next day, Griffin told Timmy. He was amazed. "I bet we can show that we are responsible enough," Timmy said. What did you notice? The author did really well in this one. Julianne?
That he kind of hinted more at the problem.
How did they do that?
By saying, "Dad said no getting my pet," and I can kind of already think that that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, I agree. Anna, Erin?
I'm adding one more, Julianne, and saying, like, I thought it, but I kind of already saw the first scene too, because like the first scene is going to be probably Griffin like thinking of the idea that they can maybe like get a pet. That's kind of hinting at the first scene.
Totally. I also thought that we could see the characters too. So we have Griffin, Griffin's dad, and I noticed that because they were talking back and forth, right? Okay, so we can all agree that they did a really good job at hinting at the problem and including the characters, but what did they forget?
Setting.
The setting. Okay, so let's take a look at the second one. So writers, so when we're thinking about our lead, we want to think about our characters, where they are, and how that could hint at the problem. And I feel like all four of you have a really good start for each one, and I think you know what you could add next. So when I send you off today, you might take some time to add a little bit more to your lead for these three factors, and then you might dive into elaborating more in other spots. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, off you go.
So those are a couple of examples of how small groups work in both kindergarten and third grade. And then we wanted to open it up to any questions that you might have either about our written reports, the overview of that report, or the small group presentation.
First, a comment. Dr. Fokler, thank you for all your years of service to Franklin Schools, 19 years. Congratulations on your new endeavor. But thank you so much for all you've given to the schools.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question on the teams. We have done a lot of team development this year. It seems to be across the district. How do they change from year to year? Teachers on a new team, and you have to kind of formulate that every year?
You know, it depends a lot. This year, there was quite a bit of change, given that we had shifting for some teachers to go teach virtually and some of the movement that that brought with it. So this year, there were new teams. I will have to say, speaking of how that worked at Southwood Glen, we have the kindergarten and the virtual teachers as well as our in-person for kindergarten, or 4K through fifth. So it was a new opportunity for us, having five first-grade teachers, so having a larger team. So those virtual teachers did join the PLC, the professional learning communities of those in-person teachers. So there's a real opportunity, and we're finding as we go back to buildings that there were some teams and relationships and collaboration forums that I think will continue, and we're talking about how do we continue to do that. We've learned a lot through Google Meet that we can accommodate that ongoing teamwork. So in a way, that broadened our idea of team. Next year at Southwood Glen, I can speak about that we'll have pretty consistent teams with some new memberships. So fortunately, there's usually a pretty solid team and then welcoming a new person onto that team. I can also speak that when we were, Dr. Fekler and I were both in interviews today and hiring for Upper Elementary, it is certainly something that we think about from a district point of view as far as teaming and what strengths the team has, what kind of a member would be great for that team. So it's something that we are considering when we are building teams as we are hiring.
Thank you.
Along that same line, do you ever sort of merge, so at the elementary level, your teams are basically grade-level teams, correct? Do you ever do like, across the district, I don't know, what would be, that'd be like a jamboree or something?
You know, I can speak, one of the ways that we did that a lot was in, was last spring, so March through June last year, when we had virtual meetings, and we're starting to use Google Meet and figure out how we were going to collaborate. Some, I think it was one day a week, those were grade-level, you know, grade-level teams in a building, kind of working through that team piece. And I should add that when we do a grade-level team, it is also including our ELL teachers and our special ed teachers and anybody who serves that group of students. But we did have the opportunity to be able to think about it as like the entire first-grade team in the district or the entire second-grade team in the district. Another great opportunity that that brought was our system specialists, both literacy system specialists and math system specialists could then join those meetings, and we just had really powerful, kind of some of the big-picture pieces that we were all working on. So I think one of the opportunities will be to think about how we can continue that kind of work.
Just to follow up then, also, you mentioned teams are grade-level. But how does special ed roll into that? I mean, those, how do they participate in the team?
So right now, at Southwood Glen, and I think it depends on the size of the school and how many grade levels they serve, but right now at Southwood Glen, a special education teacher would serve two grade levels typically, and possibly, you know, that might mean maybe four different teachers, or not serve students who are in those classrooms. We have chosen right now that those teachers become kind of more experts in one of the areas, attending and really becoming very grounded in that one grade-level team, but also collaborating with the other team members. So maybe during a prep period later during the day or some other time, that they do always connect with people that they're working with, but they have an opportunity to really go deep with one grade-level team. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, it is. It's very similar at Pleasant View. I mean, you can only be in one place at a time. So we've really worked to invest in having teachers, both ELL and special education teachers, join just one grade level for their weekly meetings. But again, they do work with students across the school, so they do have to meet and connect with other teachers, and they have to be intentional about that time. And if anything we've learned through the course of the past couple of years, through the work that we've done differently, it's we can be creative about how we do that. And so we don't have to have a lot of that transition time, we can meet virtually as well. So there are, there are a lot of things that we've learned this year that we can incorporate as we move forward. So it's been really helpful.
Do you think we'll see greater collabora, collaboration between regular and special ed? I mean, these are our students, not that's your student, this is my student.
Yeah, and I mean, we've seen it grow already, and we have a ways to go. We, we all do, and it's, we're starting to see that shift. And we do, these are all of our students. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who we're talking about, they're all of our kids. And so it's been great to see that, that come out, not just among teachers, but also among our support staff, who have been really key in helping to support in the classroom, and collect data, and inform next steps that that case manager or that teacher is going to outline. So we've seen, again, we have to be very intentional with our time. A lot of times, people will say, well, we don't have time, we don't have time. So we have to make time, we have to make it happen in order to see that students are going to be successful. And we've, we've done that this year. We've seen some great gains from students with special needs because of the collaborative efforts that teachers and support staff have been doing behind the scenes.
Another question I have is, you talk about, I know what a year of growth, you know, would look like for a student, but you mentioned a year of growth for a teacher. What does that look like? How do you measure that and know that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. It's really, it's difficult to measure, and we almost, we really have to include the teacher really in that conversation. It's not me as the principal saying, here's a year's growth and a year's time for you. It's where do we, where do we want to see you grow to? What expectations do you have for your growth in this upcoming year? And then we set those outcomes at the end of the year. Like, what are we hoping to achieve? What are you hoping to achieve professionally? What does that look like? What research do you need to dig into or learn more about so that influences your practice? And then really, kind of backwards design it, looking at those outcomes at the end of the year, and then mapping out a plan together about how to reach those outcomes. So a year's growth and a year's time is going to look different from one person to the next. It's complex work, it's hard work, but it needs to be rooted in research. We can't, again, we can't just make goals just out of nowhere. We need to look at what our data is saying, what our teachers' experiences have been professionally, and where they want to go next.
Can you give an example of some of, you know, a growth goal and a teacher might have?
Yeah, so when we take a look at some of our professional learning work, teachers have had the opportunity to create action plans, or a theory of action for their students. They've also been able to create that theory of action for themselves. So as we take a look at some of Hattie's work with mindframes, picking any one of those mindframes, teachers had an opportunity to say, here's where I'd like to grow, and here's what you're going to see in regard to the work that I'm doing, and then the results that you're going to see from the students in my class. And so at Pleasant View, when we've had those professional learning plans, teachers have had to really articulate that throughout the course of the year, and then share progress, much like we're sharing tonight with an action plan. Each teacher has their own action plan of what progress they're seeing in themselves, and also what progress they're seeing in their students. And so, again, it, it looks different from each of those teachers' lenses and perspectives, but, but it's a starting point for us. We have, we haven't done to the level of depth this work in years past. And so, again, the efforts that we've taken to start to define what that looks like are important. I don't think we're perfect in it. I don't think that it's the absolute perfect model for it, but we, we have to make, we have to make some progress towards those targets, and this is a first step in that.
Thank you.
In a, in a small group meeting, when the students are meeting with the teacher, is the teacher able to group the students based upon the level separately, individually? Like, there might be a few group of students who are at level X, and there might be a few group of students at level Y. Does the teacher take into consideration of making sure when she's grouping, and she's able to then individualize her approach to that different group?
Yeah, so we, we obviously want to see students grow in their levels, but we also are looking at reading behaviors in students. And that's even, that's even more critical to seeing those levels increase. So the more we can identify those specific skills that we need students to hone in on and improve, we'll see that, we'll see the work come in, we'll see the results come in in terms of them growing levels. So the less we focus on that. If we're focused on levels, we're going to miss all the reading behaviors and the ways that kids need to engage with the text. So it's important to be rooted in what those behaviors look like, and that students can articulate that. We've, we've really grown to have students determine, okay, what next step do you need to take as a reader so that you can grow? And I'm, again, not focused on leveling, that's, that's all part of it, but I, but the more we can focus on where students are and where they need to go next with their reading, the more beneficial that is going to be for them as a reader. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
I have one more question, sorry.
Sure, thank you.
Um, I was looking at your very impressive staff engagement data, and I was just wondering, do those surveys include open-ended questions? Because you never know what you don't know, you're not asking.
Yeah, so the, the surveys themselves are, we've, we've been able to poll certain questions to create a pulse survey. And we don't have an open, we don't have open-ended questions on those surveys. And the reason being is, this is personal, right? This is very personal work that we do every day. And in those rounding conversations, in those informal conversations with people, that's where those open-ended ques, open-ended questions are. And that's where people can share on a one-to-one level with me. And I feel like we've been able to, again, just speaking, looking at that data, that's great, the data looks great. But at the end of the day, I see different levels of engagement with our staff, and people who've been honest with me, and then they've seen, they've seen that growth right in front of them with fellow staff members. So I feel like it's more personal. I feel like if we asked an open-ended question on a survey, it's not linked to anyone, it's very impersonal, and I'm not sure how to address it, because is it really something that's a theme that's coming up? Or is it, you know, how do I follow up with that? So that's something that I've learned through the process of surveys, where in the past, I would have said, yeah, let's leave an open-ended question for someone to respond. But I really disagree with that, now knowing that we're building relationships with people. And again, this is very personal work that we do with kids and with staff every day.
And this is our first year at rounding, is that correct? Second year? Third, second?
Second, it's our second year. We really kind of dipping our toe in the water last year, starting with rounding, but this year, we've, we've jumped into two or three cycles.
And we expect to continue with it? Thank you.
Thank you. Technology Report, Ms. Zalinski.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. I believe you all have a copy of the technology report. I'm Luanne Zalinski, I'm the District Technology Coordinator. I'm going to just highlight a few things throughout the report, and we can ask questions either along the way or at the end, as you have them. So a couple of things, the purpose of the report tonight is to really kind of just share some of the information technology accomplishments, kind of what we're all about, what we do, and some of the responsibilities of that, of our department. You'll also see in there, we've developed a mission statement as part of our team goals, and that is to provide service and support and training for all of our stakeholders through education and response. So when I think about providing service and to our end users, as well as training and support to the operations and the instruction using technology. The, the report is divided kind of into three areas that I oversee. Um, one area we'll start with is kind of the techie side of things. The second area is the instruction and how technology is used to improve student learning. And the last area is related to our library media services. On page four, there's a graphic, and I threw this graphic in because I think it's a, I know it's hard to read, and it's in a printed copy, but if you have your computer open, you can zoom in on it a little bit. But the graphic really kind of depicts what we are all about. And I think education is different than any other industry. We just have nuances around technology that you don't see in other industries, so this kind of gives a good picture of that. And so if you look at that graphic, it's really, the center is the infrastructure, kind of the things behind the scenes that most people don't see, that we need in order for things to function in the district. Uh, the second ring, if you will, is around those hardware, software, peripheral pieces. And the outer ring is all the planning, the research, the staying on top of the technology, the changes that go into making all of those pieces work. The first area then of the report is around the techie stuff, and I won't go into a lot of details. But I do want to just spend a little bit of time that, of the last few years that we've spent on increasing our bandwidth through the internet at a lower and cheaper cost, as more and more dependency, especially this past couple of years with the pandemic, and more and more need for high-speed access. I'm happy that the district has invested the time and the resources to get us to where we are today, and having that stable network for our users. We spend a lot of time investing in our fiber, as we've reported over the last couple of years. So the last three years, we've invested in fiber to Alverno College, which got us connected to WISNET, which is an internet service provider of the state who provides service for many municipalities and school districts, at a very, very low cost. So the return on investment was pretty quick to, um, to get our return on investment for those investments because of the money that we're saving each year with that lower ISP cost. What that gave us, it was a couple of other opportunities. Um, one of which was the lower cost, but the other was to get us connected to some other area municipalities and school districts in a partnership through a network called WeCan. So it's a community area network that originated out of the city school district and county of Waukesha. And by us making, I call it the eastward run to Alverno to get us connected, Meskego, most recently this past year, built a piece to Countrydale, and built a piece of fiber to New Barland, that gives us redundancy to go a different direction. So if fiber would ever get cut, construction season is happening, things happen, we now have redundancy to go either direction. So that gives us, I'd say, ninety-nine point nine percent uptime for that. So that's a really huge benefit to us as a district that we've been working on. In the future, it also opens up some opportunities for us with potential sharing of resources. So maybe Meskego wants to do their backups in Storm in Franklin, or maybe we want to share some other service. So down the road, it gives us some other opportunities as well, if we want to take advantage of some of those shared services and resources.
Did you want questions now or later?
Shh, go ahead.
So how do we find these partners, and how do we pick our partners?
So they really kind of came to us in some ways. Um, we knew that was cost-effective for us to build to WISNET. Every school district and municipalities were in the same situation as we were. It's very expensive to lease lines from AT&amp;T, Time Warner Cable, Spectrum, you pick your vendor. Um, more cost-effective long-term to own that yourself and invest in it. So they all wanted to get away from those leasing contracts as well. So they, that partnership just evolved as a way to make that happen. Uh, the WeCan, I, we stumbled upon, I think it was through our vendor that we used to design our fiber, who knew that this other group existed. And so that was the start of it. We started going to their meetings, started connecting with them, and here we are today, three years later, with a really solid infrastructure.
So they essentially lease our lines, or they share ownership? They buy in to invest the...
They would lease the lines from us, we maintain ownership of the lines.
Is that a budget or revenue?
Uh, it is when we know about it prior to the last budget in October. If they were to make a decision, let's say, in December and connect in February, it wouldn't fit the budget timeline, but if we know about it ahead of time, it is.
It's not our first partner either, though, right? We have, already have leased other pieces of our network?
We have two leases in place, and we have others interested.
Can you just, the range of value of that lease annually?
Uh, they buy in to our network for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and then they share the cost of maintenance and locating on the network, an even split between everyone that's involved.
Okay, thank you.
And how many partners is it possible to have in this relationship?
About thirty.
All right. Uh, page six, if you're...
One other, sorry, one other question.
Sure.
I know the governor has, you know, broadband's big in state budget. Is there anything we would benefit from? Or are we done? Or are we, we are where we want to be, and we don't care what happens up north, or whatever, they're doing their thing?
Some, some of the state work that they're doing is to ensure that all students have access to high-speed bandwidth across the state. So a lot of that work is identifying areas in the state that does not have high-speed bandwidth, and looking to, through, I believe there's even some fund, federal funding coming at this point for districts to potentially apply for, to be able to do some of that work to get their access for their students that don't have the luxury of living in kind of a metropolitan areas we do, that has various vendors that can give us that service. Now that said, as part of that process, we did learn there's about three families here in Franklin, who in a really small niche of Franklin, that have, do not have access to some level of high-speed bandwidth, like Time Warner Cable or Spectrum doesn't have a service there, or AT&amp;T. So they're using Wi-Fi and some other, you know, avenues and stuff that they don't have internet access, but they just can't get the same level. And it's just like three families in our, in our district. So it does happen even throughout the state.
Right, thank you.
And here. If you're following along on page six, there's a little bit of a diagram, I won't go into the details. That's the network that we belong to, and, and the parts that you can see. And on the upper right is Alverno, working on the lower right. And then it goes Meskego, New Barland, Waukesha, and out to the upper left is Kettle Moraine School District. So that's the area, different entities have paid for their own, different fiber bills as part of that piece that we have access to, now shared across this part of the state. Couple of things I want to point out under the technical support. Uh, one of the tasks that we do, obviously, is provide support to all of our end users. One of the things we started last year is we had kind of an old website that had resources for our staff, and we combined that with our help desk software to create a more user-friendly interface for our, our staff to access information that they might need versus waiting for us to answer questions if they could go look it up themselves. So that's been a real, a positive. In addition to that, this year, because of COVID, we added a second instance of our help desk for students and parents to be able to submit tickets electronically. So that's new this year that we put into place. Our library ITL aids are the first people who read those. They are the ones who do our support for our students in our Chromebooks in person. So they are the ones who take the first look at those, try to answer as many questions, get things resolved as they can, and then my team also does the second level support if it's something beyond that. So that's been going really well as, for that. And the third area that I, I mentioned here is about, generally speaking, around Chromebook repairs. We're always looking to try to minimize the number of repairs that we have with Chromebooks, but things happen, especially when kids take them home. So screens break, keys pop off. And so the more that we can do to help continue to encourage students to take good care of their devices, none of it necessarily is intentional, it just is the nature of devices going from school to home and back and forth.
I'm going to just jump in here real quick. When I was reviewing this data, Ms. Zalinski was kind enough to provide me some previous year's data, just so I would have some comparisons to see where these trends are going. And I just wonder if, in the future, if any of you might also benefit from that type of information, if that's something that we might be able to see in future reports in terms of trends, and then in terms of just knowing, you know, the number of, since these are goals for you, the number of knowledge-based articles accessed by staff in terms of how much staff there is, and the number of Chromebooks repaired in terms of the number of Chromebooks that are on their last year of life. So, I don't know, perhaps I, I might just be a big weirdo in wanting to see this type of data, but if the rest of you might be interested, we could maybe just put a little note on that for next year's report.
I would be definitely interested in more on the total data. And where we're going as a district on technology, it's a, it's a big ticket item in the budget, over a million bucks. I think we need to be aware of where it's going. I think we need to be aware of where it's going.
Let's look at segue, Linda, into the next page. So, which is the budget and financial summary as just indicated there. The technology budget, not including staffing, is around 1.3 million. About a million of that is spent on replacement cycle items, which is going to list in the table below that. So every year, we're replacing Chromebooks, laptops, desktops, printers, you name it. And still, that's kind of on a rotating cycle every, usually about every four to five years. Rarely do we ever change anything out in three years unless something, the industry changes, that forces us to make a change sooner than that four- to five-year cycle.
And you said it does not include staffing, correct?
Correct.
Can you, just ask what we're paying for a Chromebook these days?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What are we paying for a Chromebook?
Right around, the physical device itself is about 300, just under 300. We have to buy a license for it and some additional things. So it ends up being around a total cost of about $350. Page eight has a graph from our customer service. One of the goals that we've been striving for that's connected to the coherence plan is around providing customer service. So after a user puts in a help desk ticket, you've seen that before, you get that survey back, how did we do? As you can see from the data, that our technicians are seen as favorably providing quality customer service. We'll continue to just monitor that and continue to watch that and assume that as long as it continues to maintain at the levels that it's at.
Just one question on the help desk. So would the goal be to have fewer tickets or more tickets?
Fewer is always better, I suppose. I mean, you know, our tickets have been pretty consistent from year to year. We run about 2,000 tickets a year, just where the numbers hit. And we have probably, I guess if you want to look at overtime to Angie's question earlier, we've added more equipment over time as well, but the tickets have stayed pretty consistent. And a lot of that, too, is we do a really nice job of not letting things get too old. I know some districts will let things get really old, but then they spend more tech support time and more time on other things. And it's probably, when you look at human and what we're paying those people to keep those things functioning, it doesn't pay out in the end. So that's something that...
Well, your knowledge base kind of was, that idea came out of perhaps what you're seeing on the help desk.
Right.
I mean, clearly, help desk services is going well. Your customer service ratings are excellent. But perhaps an interesting metric might be the rate at which tickets are resolved. That might, you know, because tickets are going to come in. But that might be an interesting thing to see would be how quickly are they resolved? I would imagine it's pretty quickly, given the success rate.
Yeah, we could say that within, usually within a few minutes, a technician usually has picked up the ticket resolution. Sometimes we need more information. And so depending on how quickly our staff or teachers get back to us can hinder or help, they'll turn around time for that. So that can be a variable that we wouldn't be able to measure. The second area of the report is how, on instructional technology and how technology is integrated into the classrooms. We work really closely with Dr. Reuter and the Teaching and Learning Department and Ms. Cody and Student Services with the curriculum review process and what their needs are. So we're really a support to those systems. And as they are going through curriculum review, our information technology system specialists are now sitting in on those curriculum review processes, looking at what they're identifying as perhaps where technology can support those different curricular areas. Starting at, right before the COVID, I guess, hit, we were also starting to look at how the information technology literacy standards connect into each of those curricular areas. So we don't have anything to show for that yet because that's a work in progress that we just started to do as part of that curriculum review process. We still have Chromebooks grades three through 12, where every student has a device. Now this year with COVID, we kept on to some really old devices to make sure every kid had a device in case we needed to pivot to home learning, at-home learning because of COVID and such. But going into next year, every third through 12th grade child will have a device. And in grades 4K, 5, kindergarten first and second, there will be a classroom set, or I should say a grade level set of 30 to be shared amongst the two or three teachers in those grade level teams. We will still have enough devices there that if students have to pivot for home into next year, that we'll be able to use those devices to provide students access that they will need. You've heard a little bit tonight from our principals about the importance of Google Meet and how that's played a role this year and last year, as well as Google Classroom in terms of teachers organizing their content and their materials for students through those two platforms. There's a graph on page nine. You can see that pretty consistently, at least in Google Meet, we've had active users in that kind of 3,000 to 4,000 range on a pretty consistent basis this year. Used for everything from classrooms to meetings to everything that all of us have been experiencing through the pandemic of more virtual screen time to meet with people.
Question. So I noticed on the big star thing page, we have Google Meet. I think Google's on the green box somewhere. And then we also have the learning management system. How does learning management system play with Google stuff? Or is it the same, is it overlap?
Yeah, it's really the same Google Classroom as a type of learning management system. We also have access to our online learning system through the consortium that we belong to, and they use a different platform called Buzz. So there's a couple of different platforms, but primarily, we've been using Google Classroom.
Is that free?
Google Classroom is free.
Free. That's a good word, free. How is that possible?
It is free. All right. A couple of other areas related to instruction. Just, we have a one-and-a-half FTE of system specialists who work with the teachers on integrating technology in the classroom and providing them with that end-user support. We also, as I mentioned, connect in with Student Services as we talk about universal tools with the, my team with the instructional information technology literacy specialists have been working with the assistive technology system specialists to look for those areas that students maybe have needs to use some universal tools that, for students that maybe don't qualify for an IEP or qualify for our 504, but they have needs. Maybe they need a screen reader, maybe they want to do voice dictation, those types of things that can help them be better learners in the classroom. And the last area is the library media area. We have a full-time library media specialist oversees the programming for all of our library media services. We have 14 information technology literacy aides who work part-time in our libraries that do both the library as well as provide that tech support I mentioned earlier for our Chromebooks. We have a robust collection of both print and digital materials. And three years ago, we joined a consortium in the state to give us more access to eBooks. And you can see the numbers there of checkout has been pretty high over the last couple of years. We also have collaboration with our public library. And one of the new things this year that we're excited about is they reached out to us and asked if we could help them set up a system so that the students can use their district ID card, so their district badges as library, public library card. So they don't have to go get a separate public library card. So that was a great partnership that we did with them this year that students can opt into if they would like to do that. And just some final thoughts. As you can see, information technology has an impact both on the operations of the district as well as instruction. We regularly define some of the things that we need to take action on and continuously improve our department. That overall impacts the coherence plan and the improvement of the district. And with that, I'll open it up to any other questions.
I have a bigger thought question here. How long have we had one-to-one with our devices?
Since 2014.
Since 2014, so six years we, kids have been carrying around their own computer. Do we know what the impact of that has been now? That, you know, we made this investment, it's a million dollars. Clearly, we knew it was important this year. But what if, now what if those computers all went away and we could still teach? What is the impact of that device in their hands? Have we thought about measuring that or leveraging it in a more cost-effective way? I mean, do we see that it reduces our cost of paper? Does it reduce our cost of textbooks? You know, where, where is the ROI on this investment in technology?
I guess, take a step back first. The reason that we first went to one-to-one, and this isn't our kind of one-to-one handbook, it was about accessing to content, it's about writing and revising, it was about accessing information for research and gathering, note-taking, personal time management, communicating, collaborating, all the things that we all use technology for, really. It's a tool. We could go back to paper and pencil, let's say, but would you go back to paper and pencil to write, you know, a message or send a card to, you know, send a letter to somebody? We probably would send email, right? So I think some of that is a little bit nebulous because we've evolved as a system where things are done digitally and electronically, and this provides a tool to do that. But the original purposes for what we strive to do with that is still there. You know, it's still about having access to information. It's about using the tool for some of those purposes.
I just had a conversation with Dr. Khan this afternoon. As we think we work through curriculum review and access to resources, textbooks are not what vendors or the programs we work with. You think about the science work that you approved last year, practically the way is completely digital database and online platform. There are not physical textbooks because once you get a textbook, it's already out of print. All the pre-AP bio work you approved and the pre-AP chem, college board has the resources online for students to access so they can update, have the most current research at our fingertips. So that's the return on investment, that we're not buying new textbooks every year to keep up with print, but also to Ms. Solinsky's points about efficiency and effectiveness. So we use our laptops to access Bored Talks quickly. And if there's a revision, just like kids do, looking at content, a teacher can make a quick change to what they're going to use for an instructional approach via Google Classroom within the classroom. So we use it from an efficiency standpoint. So the return is time and ease for our kids and the adults and access to information we wouldn't regularly have if we were still using physical materials.
Do we see actual teaching time increase as teachers are more efficient with grading, with attendance, with all these other classroom management functions get easier?
I think we see more student independence in problem solving. The taking attendance, whether it's, I quickly do it in a piece of paper, I go to power school, it's the same amount of time. So those roles and procedures are, regardless if they're virtual, digital or on paper, are just procedures that take place in any classroom. But we see kids being able to, instead of going like this and waiting for a teacher, to think, okay, where's, where are my resources? How do I access them? How do I think critically? And how do I take the next step in my learning? And try and maybe fail, but we know that failure leads to learning. And then they continue to build that independence and agency of I can do this.
And aren't we also preparing them for the future? I mean, I see that all of our directors here are with computers. Are we not preparing kids for the future? Because most likely, they're going to be using a device like this in their profession.
I just want to see us leverage it, you know, maximize it, you know? We can assume it's happening, but without focusing on it.
These kids use these things even at home. And I think another sort of secondary gain that's really interesting is it's their ability to continue doing their group work even when they're not with their group at school. It's been really interesting to see they all collaborate on a shared document. They'll collaborate over Google Meet. And I don't know if you've seen that as parents as well, but yeah.
Absolutely. They definitely are working differently, just like we are working differently. That, that was, experiences wouldn't be able to be possible without the technology.
Well, congratulations on this year. I mean, this year tested it. My kids really tried hard to destroy their Chromebooks at every opportunity. And we kept going, so good job.
And just to comment on that, I think we saw actually a lot fewer Chromebook repairs this year. And a combination of things, kids weren't taking them back and forth, but they needed them. They needed them and they wanted them to have access to the information that they needed. They wanted them to have access to communicate with their friends. They, you know, we saw really good results with that.
Well, I understand kids love them, you know, play games, talk to my friends. I'm just interested in how it changes dynamics in the classroom with the teacher. What's the teacher doing there all in here? I guess, I'm trying to understand the impact there. And maybe that's not your question, that's something I can follow up on.
It's a balance, Linda. It's a balance. It's not all on the screen or all in person.
The greatest impact on achievement is the teacher-student relationship. And this is a tool that helps with that relationship to be effective and help the student build that agency. So teachers are still teaching. It's just, to Dr. Bear's point, kids have now access to collaborate in different ways, be more creative with the output of their knowledge as well.
And I would invite you, you know, next fall to spend some time in some classrooms. And then you, I think, would be able to see that happen. Yes.
You know, one of the things as a parent I have seen is that although when the Chromebooks are given to the children, it's understanding from the district that the Chromebooks are going to be used for educational purposes. But kids being kids, you know, they do use it for multiple, you know, purposes, entertainment and whatever it is. In my experience, how do we, I know that you can't control, and the kids have learned their behavior, you know, and become responsible. But sometime it comes with the age, you know, like a three-year, a third grader and a fourth grader, that's still too naive to start making conscious decisions of what to use a Chromebook for. So is there a way we can facilitate these kids to use the Chromebooks for appropriate and also protect them? Because when you can go on websites, in simple as YouTube, there are contents which you can't control. So how do we especially protect our younger kids?
Yeah, I think that's a really challenging question because we have control when they're here. We can't control necessarily what's happening when they're at home. So some of that's a partnership with us and parents around educating both what we're doing, what the expectations are, when, what homework and what things should they be doing when they're at home. One of the things we did when we first started the one-to-one initiative is we had parent nights and we talked about, this is a partnership. When they're at school, we can do these things. And these are things we have in place. When they're at home, these are the things that you can try. I mean, you're in charge at home of where is that Chromebook? Is it in their room all night, monitoring it? And the things that we can do as parents? Because that was something new to the parents, having that device, that school device in their home. And so we have had those conversations and did those trainings. And now I believe we just send the video out because it's been seven years. We don't do those formal trainings as much anymore. So, but I think it's a partnership. It has to be a partnership with families, both school and home.
And, you know, we, if you want to describe the filters that we, you know, make sure exist in the devices and how those work a bit, that might be another way to respond.
Yeah, so all the devices do have an Internet filter for content that are on them. Works both at school and at home the same way. And so the way that works is we have a service provider that provides that content filter for us. And they categorize every website on the Internet or as they come out as quickly as they can into those categories. So it might be, you know, alcohol, drugs. There might be a category on adult material. It might be social media. So those are all categorized and they categorize every website. So we turn on or off those categories. And we don't really have a lot open in those categories, other than what they need. But as we know, the Internet triples every few months. So keeping up with that, obviously, we can still block or unblock a site that is categorized differently than what we want. So we maybe want something blocked that's not. And we may need to open up something that a teacher is using that needs to be opened up. So we do have that flexibility when we are alerted through our help desk system that we need to block or unblock something as those things become available. YouTube is tricky. There's very limited filtering out there that can do a really good job with that in terms of what you can block and unblock. It's very tricky.
Also, can the students connect their Chromebooks to their home printers? Because I have seen that when students are trying to do their homework, print out something, at least my kids, when I can't talk to them, they say, hey, I can't connect my printer. So they log into my regular Mac at home and then they print out. So is there a filter-specific protection for that?
There is a way to do printing from the Chromebook. The printer itself has to be Chromebook capable. So it has to be able to have Google Cloud Print available on the printer itself. And I believe we have directions out there on the student webpage on how to do that. Or you could Google it, but you certainly can set that up if you'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Solinsky. Draft communications plan refresh update, Mr. Kafka.
Long awaited for.
Something scratch, guys.
Who's going to say?
We're out of the hall area, you should be here soon.
Are we on? Okay. I'm going to stand just because I need to move around. You guys need to move around probably too. So, good evening. Here to give you a communications update, which includes the 2021 to 24 plan refresh. So very briefly, I just want to kind of recap what we did this year for the new board members. In December, I typically come to the board and do a communications update aligned to the plan. The current plan is expiring here in June, and so I've been working on revising and doing a plan refresh. So this is the executive summary from the last plan. Previous updates that I've given to the board have involved sharing what the tactics are that we've been working on under that communication plan. And with this being a plan refresh, this is really taking guidance from this past plan, looking at it, kind of taking it apart, and deciding what pieces we want to be part of the plan moving forward. So that's why it's a refresh and not necessarily a whole creation of a brand-new plan. It's really looking at what we've accomplished, what we need to carry forward into this new plan. And then that obviously involves updating our tactics, which we do a little bit every year as we go forward, just to kind of refresh ourselves and see what we need to accomplish. So as I shared in December, this is just kind of an animated graphic of refreshing you a little bit of what I shared. We talked about how about eighty-five to ninety percent of the past plan has been completed or is being worked on, and so I gave you updates about certain areas, certain tactics that we're working on or attained, where we were researching, or where we were generating ideas. And so for this com-plan refresh, the areas of focus and the strategies are what I'm bringing to you tonight, and we want to make sure that these align with our new coherence plan for better alignment. So I'm going to jump into those now. So just kind of the structure of the plan, so we'll have the area of focus, and then under that we'll have two strategies. And then for those two strategies, what still has to be developed are the tactics. So what I'm bringing to you tonight are the actual areas of focus and the strategies, and then the tactics are in development, and that'll be shared as part of the full and complete plan in the fall. So we'll be going over three areas of focus and the strategies under each. Before I get into that, though, I do want to share about the metrics and how we will gauge that these tactics are showing growth. Some of the areas that we pull metrics from have to do with key performance indicators that you'll see referenced in our coherence plan, as well as metrics that we pull from different surveys, different feedback loops that we do with our staff, with our community. So some examples of what that means is you heard a little bit about the PULSE survey when the principals presented earlier. One of the questions on that PULSE survey that we give to our staff four times a year is, from the district level, I receive information that is timely and relevant. So we monitor that, and directly, that'll directly be a metric that we use for some of the tactics that we develop. From our Community Pride Survey, there are some statements that are given in that when we do our Community Pride Survey, and you can see them there. Things like Franklin Public Schools proactively communicates with the public, proactive communication is at eighty-five percent in the strongly agree, agree area, the last time that we administered that survey. Generally speaking, being proud of FPS, that has to do with pride, that's in some of our strategies that you'll see here in a minute, and how likely would someone be to recommend Franklin Public Schools to someone new to the area. So again, those are metrics that we take from our surveys and we use as a benchmark to show growth. Aside from those, we also have tools that we use, that I've shared with you before, that we can pull analytics or metrics from. Our newsletters are all on the Smore Newsletter App platform, so we pull metrics. I shared some of that with you in December. Social media platforms where we're sharing about pride in Franklin Public Schools online, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, I pull metrics from that, so I share those with you as well, and we use those as metrics for our communication plan, as well as anecdotal feedback from various groups, from the leaders, from staff, from the community. We pull all of that in to show growth through our plan. So our first area of focus will be just telling the FPS story, really focusing on our key messaging, our branding, the things that we want to focus on is that those are consistent, concise, relatable to our various audiences, which we'll get to here in a minute. And what I mean by that is really sticking to our mission, our vision, and our values, and making sure that communications we put out, whether coming from the building level, from a principal, from the district level, that we're focusing on explicitly making connections to the mission and the vision and the values, as well as our visuals and our logos being relatable, our color schemes and all of that, at the site level and at the district level. So the first strategy under this area of focus for the FPS story is building consistency in those communications using key messaging. And I'll give you an example tactic here in a minute, so that's the first strategy area. Second strategy area is building and better defining the Franklin Public Schools brand and all that goes into that, whether it means sharing our pride, sharing our story, developing what that story looks like. So those are the two strategy areas under this first area of focus that'll be part of the plan refresh. So here's an example, this is just a draft of a tactic, we're still kind of workshopping this a little bit, but under Strategy 1A, building consistency in communications using key messaging, one tactic might be something like this, correlating consistent messages, things like routine drills at buildings, emergency responses, alerts to families, into a communications guide for leaders to refer to, to add to, to pull from, just so that our messaging is consistent. We don't have a communications guide right now, so that is something that you'll see throughout various tactics when I bring the plan to you in the fall. Timeline for that will be shared, that'll probably begin in the fall, I'll start developing that, that'll probably be me being responsible for it, as well as pulling from leaders to kind of use messages they already have and craft them so they're consistent. And then the metrics for that might be feedback from leaders or developing some kind of leadership survey, we haven't worked that one out yet, but that's something that we realize that we need is just to help with their consistent messaging, and that would be an example tactic that would fall under that strategy. Our second area of focus will be our internal stakeholders, so this would be board members, yourselves, leaders, our staff. Our first strategy is increase the quality and accessibility of one-way, two-way, and passive communication with all staff. And what we mean by that is, one-way communication is when we broadcast out, we're sending out messages to our internal stakeholders, it's a one-way push. Two-way is when we do something where we're getting feedback, whether it's a survey, we're asking for feedback, we're asking for comments. And then passive communication might be things where, might be an example where we store information for staff so that they can access it at a time of their choosing. I'll give you an example of a tactic that aligns with that here in a minute. Our second strategy is to foster pride through internal communication that promotes Franklin Public Schools as a better place to work. So this kind of falls more under how we recognize and acknowledge staff, things like retention, you saw tactics in the last plan about doing, you know, retention interviews as staff choose to leave the district and using that information to help us grow. Things like staff engagement, those will be some tactics that'll be developed under there, probably working closely with HR. So an example tactic in this area of focus, this one here, create and maintain a passive communication system, an example like an Intranets, which I shared with you, we've been developing this year, that allows staff to access information as needed. So myself working on that along with our directors and leadership to put that information somewhere for staff to access it when they need it. Right now, we currently push out our Franklin Find newsletter, and we're great about putting resources in there, but we don't have a real way for staff to access that information unless they go back issue by issue. So that's definitely a need, so we're developing that. And we would possibly, for a metric for that tactic, have a survey or some kind of rating system on the site where staff would kind of give it a rating, or we would ask questions and get feedback on how that's helping them access the information. Our third area of focus is our external stakeholders, so this would be families, including students, our local area businesses, and community members. First strategy there, similar to our internal stakeholders, is increase the quality and accessibility of that one-way, two-way, and passive communication with all families. And then the second one would be to foster pride through those external communications that promote FPS as a better place to learn, better place to work, and part of a better community. So we'll be developing tactics under those, specifically the three, I want to speak to that for a minute. So we've gotten really good at one-way communication, pushing out those messages. Now I think we need to really work on two-way communication, and I think that's evident by some of the speaking we heard tonight. What is our community interested in, or what do we need to communicate about better, and how do we create those feedback loops for that? So that is one thing that I definitely think we'll work on. I don't know what that looks like in terms of a tactic yet, but we need to really identify what those critical issues are in the community and how the school district works with that, how we collaborate on that, and kind of where we go from there. So that'll be something that I think will be a part of our plan for the next three years. Quick example tactic, increasing kind of one-way, two-way, passive communication. So this is something we're already doing, but we would, this would be an ongoing tactic of using our one-way weekly bulletin newsletters to continue to communicate, to continue to inform at the site level from the schools as well as the district, monitor and analyze those metrics, which we are currently doing, and then try to work that feedback into our newsletter so that we make sure that our audiences are receiving the information that is helpful to them. Metrics for that might come from the Community Pride Survey, again, a statement that I pulled from earlier, two statements rather, about us just proactively communicating and using that information to make our communications better. So in terms of what's next, the coherence plan will be presented to the board in June. Once that's finalized, then we can craft the tactics for the communication plan. That'll be me working on that along with some of our leaders, creating and adjusting those tactics under those strategies, and then presenting that to the board, the next three-year plan for, for the next three-year plan in the fall. So that is what I had for you as an update. Looks like the Taco Bell has not arrived yet. Hopefully soon.
Chad, I loved item 3A. I agree with you. I think that as a parent who had, used to speak at board meetings and get frustrated, like, why can't we have a conversation about this? It took me a while to figure out the best tactics and ways to, you know, take individual meetings and call people individually, and if we can, as board members, I'm just speaking for myself, but I'd love during our retreat if we could brainstorm on some ways that we could perhaps help facilitate these sort of normal methods of receiving information so that it doesn't have to be a frustrating experience for community members and then us, because we can't, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I saw board retreat discussion on the agenda, so that was something you guys can talk about.
There's just got to be a better way than just someone screaming at us and us, you know, it's just not productive and effective.
Yeah, it's not good for anybody.
Right, right. Any other questions or any other feedback?
I was wondering maybe in terms of the community feedback, kind of in that Focus Three as well, do, how else could we communicate with the community who don't have students in the buildings?
That's a great question, yeah.
That question comes mostly from, being honest, like in my voter phone calls, I had people I talked to who had no idea that we were actually in school the whole year.
Sure.
People who live in the community who are getting their news from, you know, local news stations or something, and didn't, didn't realize that the students in Franklin were actually in school. So how can we better communicate with those people?
Right, so, so one way that we currently do that is we do have the city newsletter insert that is in the mail to fourteen thousand homes, and that goes out five times a year. So we do try to tailor those messages more to community members that may not have children in the schools so that we're speaking to those audiences. So that's one way in print that we possibly get those messages to them. Hopefully, as things start to open up a little bit more, maybe there could be some more in-person type gatherings. I know Dr. Miller also does her superintendent chats, that tends to be more families that are in the, in the community that she gets feedback from, but she also has been a part of going to some of the senior citizen community lunches to just engage with those audiences. So those are things we've done in the past that I'm hopeful that we can bring back.
Great, thanks.
Are you reaching anybody through social media, do you think?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Are you reaching anybody through social media in terms of...
If they choose, yeah, that's a good point. If they choose to follow our social media channels, that's, that's on, then the recipient's end. I mean, we push out a lot on social media, just sharing about our schools. It's just a matter of if those people out there have chosen to follow us, or like us, or friend us, or whatnot, just so that they can see those messages. But that's definitely something that we continue to advertise in all venues.
Well, as a community member, if it's that thing, I don't have kids in the school, so where do I go? I go to the website.
Sure.
I'm not a happy website user yet, so...
Okay, right. That may be a tactic that you might see presented.
Yeah, I, I used it today, and I was going to send you a message because it didn't work the way I thought it was going to work. I just wanted to find out who the assistant principal was at the high school.
Okay.
You know, you got, you go to the high school, and then you got a staff directory, and the principal's right there, but not anybody under him, because then I guess where I found it. You don't care, nobody goes...
Staff directory, that's where, that's where I would...
In order to look up, you have to know the person in order to look them up.
Sure.
Like, who is the, you have to go to the, under the principal's welcoming message, then his assistants pop up.
So our pages currently do feature the principal, and then I thought the staff directory had a field where you could search by role. I'll double-check that, but that would, yeah, that would be probably the way to do it.
And then you had, all the bulletins are cataloged there, talking about a place to go for information, but I pop up that screen, the first one I see is 2020, and I'm thinking, this has never been updated, or what? But I have to scroll way down to get the current one.
Are you talking building newsletter or districts?
Yep, yep, yep.
I'm sorry?
Building-level newsletter, building-level newsletter.
So the secretaries man a page that has it broken out by month, and you can click on the month, and it should be twenty-one, twenty-one should be, I believe, at the top.
That was the other way.
Okay.
It sounds like Linda wants to be your beta user for your website.
That's right, that's right. We will welcome that.
That's what I'm doing.
Definitely one of the tactics we have talked about is refreshing the website or looking into possible expenses over the next three years for what a redesign might cost. So, yeah, that is something that, as I've been in this role, I've, I've looked at and we're talking about it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Just one other thing, maybe. I saw that you are creating the Intranet for staff to put information out there.
Yeah.
While the board has also reports that we get every year, can we work a little bit on, we have board docs, but can we maybe do a better job of organizing that, and maybe some board members can help with that?
So I don't know if I can answer that because I don't have a hand in board docs, but we can, we can...
A library of reports would help, so...
Yeah.
Because to your point, just like staff, they can't access a certain report until they know which newsletter, or we can't get any reports unless we know which agenda item.
Sure.
Then you can get the report. It just makes more sense to have it better organized.
Yeah.
I agree, I think that would help with Dr. Bear's question from before about how can we get these reports?
It will be my chronic question, I always want to know what the previous report looked like.
I will look at that and see what the capabilities are. Board docs has not been under my purview as much, but we can, we can, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? You guys have been sitting for such a long time, I feel really, really bad.
I'm just waiting for the Taco Bell.
Just waiting for the Taco Bell? Chalupas? I hope you like chalupas because that's, that's in the order. All right, thank you, guys.
Looking for Kafka ice cream right now.
All right, thank you. Board retreat discussion, Dr. Miller.
I'll start with a date. It was quite challenging, if you could see the doodle, and I'm not quite certain you can make it, Ms. Larson, but that was...
That's my wedding anniversary.
Oh, okay. That was the best date available. It's July 21st, six to eight thirty. So the board retreats are designed to provide a learning opportunity for the board and an opportunity to set your strategic actions. So those would be the two reasons why the board would have a retreat outside of regular board meetings. So with that as kind of the backdrop, I guess Mr. Sparg and I would like to entertain ideas for what learning opportunity the board would like to engage in. You know that I've provided you each with a book and like to do a book study, but there would be a way to do that over time. We wouldn't have to do that as the full retreat. We might be able to read a chapter or two and do part of the retreat on that, and then build that into the next school year periodically, some conversation around that book. So I wouldn't see the book taking up the whole retreat on the 21st, but what Mr. Sparg and I are looking for now are, what do you want to do on the 21st?
You had several ideas, Linda.
Well, I think it would be good to, and you mentioned, you know, talk about this, what we've been experiencing in the last three meetings and what we might do differently to give the community an avenue to understand how they can engage with us in a different way. And I don't know what that looks like either, but...
No, I think we need to brainstorm around that, and I don't know, that's just my, I mean, I know I'm a newbie, I hate to...
Well, I think we had some conference ideas that we could look into. There was a couple of school districts that had tried different things.
Looking at community linkages and things, and maybe creating more groups.
Right.
Groups in the community that we would meet with regularly through the school year to have conversations outside of board meetings.
And we have access to those slide decks, don't we, or presentations that we could maybe preview those?
I believe we should, because I think there was... I believe we should, because I think it was scum.
Preview those before we come, and, and then talk about how it might relate to our district.
That might be interesting to review some different models, and then have some discussions around that.
And I think there are some other big, bigger issues out there, the, I mean, we heard about the critical race theory, that we maybe need to have some dialogue so we know where, just some, I mean, I have no idea, just kind of, I didn't have a lot of background information on that until it was recently shared, but there's just some, I don't know what the topics would be, but there are some issues out there that maybe we need to talk about, and maybe, you have to think of some of yourselves, I mean, there's, I mean, the state budget has the, or, has transgender, you know, competition, that's another thing out there, I don't know, maybe we don't tackle these things, maybe we just leave them where they are and, and don't, and when it happens, it happens, or we can try and get ahead of that and be aware of things.
Well, although we don't respond to the comments that we get, because it's community commenting to us, could we, on a follow-up meeting on a particular topic, have some kind of write-up? Like, we've talked about masks quite a bit, what are we getting back to the community as to why no decision is being made about the masks? You know, we're certainly not telling them that the flu season was really low, probably because we're wearing masks, and the flu is harder on, on children, more children die from the flu than COVID, so actually, wearing the mask was very beneficial. But what other topics come up? One, one gentleman was talking to us about a, a street that wasn't going through and something we weren't doing, and that has nothing to do with us, but how do we, how do we comment on that?
This might be sort of this comment about how we can sort of help close the loop from what's happening at the meetings, not necessarily the specific topics that came up, but just sort of the model.
Well, but specific topics?
No, I know, but like, more talking, not, not necessarily about, talking about how we can respond in some way, right?
Right. The how is what we got to come up with, but we should do something to get back to.
Yeah, I agree.
The community, yeah.
So, keeping in mind, you know, the backdrop is, it's a learning opportunity, would you want someone from WASB to come in and talk to you further about situations like the ones we're currently in and how school boards can best respond? I, the retreat is, is an opportunity for learning, so I, I just would offer that as, as an idea, not necessarily something that you would do, to have open dialogue about controversial topics, and a retreat is not really what it's for.
I think I second Dr. Mueller's suggestion where, at least to have a framework, for, for example, legislative, you know, WASB, someone who can come in, because the interaction with the community, being the board members, the policies and processes which needs to be followed, I think that would be a good refresher kind of a course, which me, as a new board member, would definitely benefit, and I don't know if anybody else, but definitely, I think something like, you know, professionals coming and giving a little bit of, you know, talk and presentation on that would definitely be helpful as such.
Yeah, there are definitely a lot of controversial topics that, you know, we need to, to work on together collaboratively with our community, so to get, to get some advice on, on how to do that within your role as a board member, I think would be a valuable way to, to kind of get at, what I'm hearing is, we feel like we want to do more.
Yeah, I like that idea, I like the idea of finding out how we can, in our role as school board members, which is limited in some ways, but not in others, but we need to find out what ways so that we can do a better job of, of addressing these.
And paired with that is, you know, how, how are other districts successfully engaging with their communities so that maybe there's less turmoil? So, you know, to kind of look at maybe those examples that some of you have heard about in other districts, I think you could take some time at your retreat to look at those and see what those look like, and that paired with getting someone perhaps from WASB to talk about conflict and the best way for boards to, to work with their communities, I think would be good. And then the third piece would probably be looking at the coherent, coherence plan, what are the strategic actions that the board wants to take? So in two and a half hours, that's pretty much stuff to do, but I'd be happy to...
That sounds like a good ambitious plan.
Yeah, I'd be happy to kind of work through some of the details with Mr. Sprague and then communicate further with you about that plan, and build that agenda for you for that 21st date.
We did have that in-service, I don't know, was it two or three months ago with the gentleman from WASB, that was just like an hour long, what I thought was a real effective way to kind of share some of that knowledge that they had, so I think that would be, you know, a good use of at least an hour of that time of our retreat.
Right, right.
With an expert.
Maybe I can, you know, get someone to come live, you know, and do it, which would be very nice.
That'd be even better.
That sounds good, that's the plan.
Great, thank you, everyone. All right, treasurer's report is available in board docs library, school board liaison reports, anybody have any board liaison reports?
Well, I just wanted to share that I did work with Judy, SWSA was, it's still following the state budget, as you know, it's getting pretty exciting in terms of what they are proposing to do, zero increase, and it, we're working to, work with Judy then to get some communication out to our specific legislator, legislators to provide influence where we can, and I guess it's a very dynamic situation, so we'll, you all received that, I hope you thought it was appropriate?
Yeah, thank you for keeping us informed, yeah.
And I could say a little bit more, I think the, I think we, we're hearing that, you know, they don't want to give us anything because we got too much federal dollars, you know, like, we're in an okay place now, I think, but they're hearing that we always want more, so I'm not sure that's a good tactic, so I think maybe our message might be that, you know, we need to get back to normal maybe, and not, and I think normal would be some increase, recognizing that state is our partner in this funding, or, I mean, they're two-thirds funding of our financial picture, they should be stepping up and providing some costs to continue, and I think zero kind of ignores that, and that might be our message. I want to check with board members, as, you know, as we develop our message, are you, are you comfortable with that message, or do you have other ideas that we might use to influence our legislatures? Just share that if you email it, I guess it's fine too, but I think that's, I'll work with Judy and also check in with Mike on how that goes forward.
I just want to say that my first liaison meeting involved a 1.8 mile walk, so, got that going for us.
All right, anyone else? School and community engagement reports.
Well, I can share, I attended the Forest Park Drama Club performance on Friday night, which was thrilling, I think it was, I mean, it's always fun to see students perform, and in this case, the Forest Park students have previously performed at Forest Park in the, in the old gym, and then last year in this space, and this year they were able to use the Sabre Center, which was really, I think, just kind of a very exciting experience for the students to really feel like they're performing on, you know, on the big stage, and it was really great, I thought they did a really great job.
I also got a chance, I was, I went to this little invite, 20 minutes, they wanted a kind of a live audience for the choir performances that they're taping, I was like the person of one, but there were other classes there, and it was my first time really in a building, in the high school, in over a year, and just, you know, looking at the kids, reminding myself of what high schoolers look like, and teenagers, and how they, although they had a special day today, it was out in the woods, because they have spirit week, so they were dressed in a very distinctive way, which I couldn't quite understand, I also took the opportunity to, the assistant principal did take me for a walk around the building, got to see, he did show me the construction classroom where they, I was very impressed with, I mean, each student builds a little house, you know, on a pallet, they have walls, and they put in the electricity and drywall, and that was very interesting to see that hands-on experience that they, they get there. Also, I did hook up with Tracy, the new theater director, I've always wanted to see what the board looked like and what was...
It's huge, huh?
Got to see that, and he did mention that he thought it, they should be performing over there, so he brought them over there to do their performances this year, that's one of his first changes that he made, and he's got a, he's got a lot going on, so it was, it was just so good to be inside the building, and there were masks everywhere, but I saw absolutely no issues with everybody wearing a mask, and it was a very orderly, very quiet, very, a great learning, learning environment from what I could see, so that's my report.
Thank you, anyone else? Item 12, school board member comments. 13, future agenda items, 2021, 22 CISA contract, 2021, 22 SWSA agreement, 2021, 22 budget and staffing presentation, payment to Fund 46, and coherence plan, end of year report, Dr. Miller, where are we with dates?
Good question, I think that H and I are in the July meeting, and the others are in the June meeting.
So, annual academic standards adoptions, 2021, 22 budget draft number one approval are all June 23rd, 2021, 22 Board of Education Policy Review Schedule and Graduation Update are in July, on the 14th, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Subwooze.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:43.